I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any board of committee reports? No? Okay. There's no published citizens' concerns? We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight? Town administrators' report.
Do you want me to go through the budget?
No, why don't we get rid of most of the business? Is that...
Okay. Well, just to report, the updated snow and ice deficit is currently at one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six ninety-three. And then I have for this evening for us to go through the budget and warrant votes, to record the votes, and wanted to remind you of the deadline, April twenty-second, to sign the warrant. May thirteenth is the election, and May twentieth is the town meeting.
Okay.
And then if you want to take up your other business, we can come back to the warrant.
All right. Business license renewal? Excuse me. Walton's Auto Lab at seventy-eight Hanover Street?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Palm Island Beach Coma, request to have music at the restaurant Sunday, July sixth.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, did you miss that on purpose?
No, I didn't. I didn't have my glasses on. A new business license, sculpture by Beverly Siemens, two Newman Road, sale of art and antiques. And what this is, this is in where Dick Joy had his antique shop?
Oh, yeah.
And they're gonna be moving in there probably a lot of the same type activity.
So you know them?
John Siemens, is that it?
All right, motion to approve?
Second. Okay. Any other questions? No?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Palm Island Beach Coma, request to have music at the restaurant Sunday, July sixth, from three to seven P.M. to celebrate their third anniversary. And Greg, you anything to say about that? That's straightforward?
That's pretty straightforward, yes.
Three to seven? All right. Motion?
Yeah, I'll give them a motion.
Second? If you second it, then we can discuss it.
All right, then I'll second it.
All right. Now, you got a question?
Are we having trouble?
What?
With the music?
I was wondering if I could have permission to have entertainment on Sundays as a kind of a regular thing, from three to seven. And that's what I'm kind of looking for. We're having our, we'd like to have it on the Sunday for our third anniversary, but then also if we could have it on a regular basis on Sundays from three to seven.
You're talking three to seven? Seven would be the end?
Seven would be the, yep.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I guess, Greg, I had heard that... I mean, I want you to be able to run a good business down here, don't get me wrong. I had just heard that, and I don't know what it was, that... I could be mixing it up, that you only do things twelve times a year, and that's, I know now, for liquor licenses. That was sticking in my head. And then I've heard a couple complaints about entertainment that have come to me from people.
Correct. Yep.
And most of it's volume, noise, loudness of the music, probably.
One of our, I mean, I pushed the envelope. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that I pushed the envelope. And it is a, we're in the process of soundproofing the building, and what I know now is not to have the entertainment that I had in the prior. More of a low-key, maybe, you know, low-amplified music. It's just in the afternoon, it's, it's a very non-disturbing time. I'm, you know, from three to seven is kind of not unreasonable to have the entertainment. Now, it's just a, I'm working on the effects of the sound. It's, it's just really hard to... I'm working on the sound.
To be honest with you, that's enough for me, especially during the timeframes, until some other thing comes up.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm working with, with as much as I can to solve everything that comes my way.
I think, like I said, I think we've discussed that, and you've satisfied me.
Okay.
Chuck, you got it? Mike, you got it?
Well, when, Greg, when you opened, we had opposition, but we went with issuing the, you know, the permits and stuff. And now, all of a sudden, we're getting this, it's happening again. And you're right, it is the volume, and it is weighted. But I'm noting, this is July, which means the windows are gonna be open. Maybe, maybe some of this entertainment is gonna be outside. I think it's gonna cause us more grief. And I don't know how we can, see, you're a restaurant. You're not a nightclub.
Correct.
And...
All the entertainment is indoors. I, I really don't have anything going outside. Our doors and windows are usually closed because of the A.C. It's rare that our windows, any of the windows that are open are, we never open the skylights or haven't since we've been open. So any of the windows that are open are, are that way or away. You know, I've considered putting up a fence. I don't know if that will do any good, or if I can... But with that being said, it's the, I know what I cannot have anymore, and what I can have, or I think I can have.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause there's eight pages right in here of complaints. Okay?
Eight pages of...
Things of excerpts from newspaper clippings and stuff like this. And one of the things that steps right out on me, Greg, right here, is this is from Sandy Lennon, okay? "My husband has made three attempts through dialogue with the owner, and complaints with the police department has been unsuccessful to stop the noise." That's pretty serious. Okay? I mean...
It is. It is. And I, that's, and that was my, when I say I pushed the envelope, I did it in the wintertime to get through winter, because it is, was a very tough, hard winter. Without the entertainment, I'm not saying we would have been in deeper, but we would have been in a lot deeper than we are now. You know, I, in the beginning, opening the business, I ran into flak, you know, you all ran into flak. The building was running in disrepair. They complained it was rundown. You know, we fixed it up, and I, I understand that, you know, it's the, it's just hard to run a business trying to find ways to make and generate money for us to stay in business. You know, we're, we're just a family-run business that we're just trying to make a living, and it's, it's hard to appease everybody. I understand. It's, but I'm really, we have, I have met with Timmy, or said, and...
I, from a small business myself, I fully appreciate it. The music is above and beyond the scope of the restaurant. And, you know, it's turning, as Mike said, more into a nightclub than into a family restaurant. I have no problem with the Sunday three to seven thing, but I don't know about every Sunday. Is there any law on that, that you're aware of, of over twelve per year? I'm unaware of that.
No, that, that probably was for something else. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
But I mean, I think... Will you clarify what the next thing on the agenda is? Is that because you're trying to, which is, you know, to discuss the possibility of a...
Should we finish this one before we take up the other one? Or do you think they come...
I mean, well, let's do this then. If none, if the next one has no relevance to granting just one Sunday, then yes, let's finish this.
Okay.
Right.
All right, then let's do that.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
Say it again. Tell me again what you wanna do.
What I was thinking of was discussing why Greg's really going for an entertainment license. You know, are we granting something that's not legal? But I suppose we've granted it before, and one Sunday for an anniversary isn't gonna be the end of the world if you would like to not, if you wanna close this before you go to the next one. In other words, what I'm hearing from Greg is that you probably, in some respects, need to acquire an entertainment license.
So it's two different things.
Two different things, right. I'm, I'm looking for that one date in Jul, in July for our anniversary for that, Sunday.
So I can close this, and then when we go to talk about entertainment, you're talking about music four or five times a week?
Nope, just once a week, on Sunday.
But you're still gonna need an entertainment license for that.
That's what he's gonna discuss, yeah.
Correct.
All right. So another...
They really are coupled, though.
And what I'm saying is, we're gonna grant something that maybe not, might not be legal, if he's trying to get an entertainment license for it. We've done it before, I still don't really mind, and David, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, Jeff, your, your issue about may not be one goal. I mean, I missed the very beginning of the conversation, obviously, but I've seen you many times before, and it's getting to the point where I was thinking, well, jeez, this really does sound like we ought to just have an entertainment license if we're gonna continue this, because you come to us so often, and these are, these are my requests and more and more, it's, it's becoming a part of the way you think of, of running your business. So, to me, they're very coupled, and it's kind of, almost, in terms of the order, it's almost, in some ways, the wrong way around in my mind, because if we choose to grant an entertainment license, then he doesn't have to keep coming back with all these requests, so...
But with that being said, it would be just for the Sundays from three to seven. You know? It's, it's been, ever since I opened, it's always been somebody complaining about something about me. And it's really, I, I can't appease everybody, and I'm not going to. It's, it's...
Mike, Mike had a question.
The question is, I mean, where he's a restaurant...
For John, right.
Okay, I wanna ask John in a minute. Where he's a restaurant, is he entitled to entertainment as a restaurant?
That's, that's why they come to us, for the permits.
And he, he's not a nightclub, and I, I'm sure we don't want a nightclub down there. John, what are your feelings about it? Have you...
My feelings as well. What we want to do is any, any issues we've had at least level, a response out there which former heads have been accommodating to us. But I know there are some neighborhood concerns regarding this.
You get a lot of complaints, or...
As of late, yeah, it seems to be increasing, as far as... But that being said, also, one of the final responses, each government would be very accommodating to appease those concerns on an immediate basis, on a case-by-case basis.
When you went down there, did you find, did it seem that the noise was excessive, I guess? I don't know if you went down, but you probably got reports.
The officers have, and they've been instructed to make an assessment outside, and also complain in residences, you know, to see if they can ascertain the level of the disturbance. And they have been able to note that they can hear the bass, and they can hear the thumping of the music. Maybe not so much the music itself, but the bass does seem to carry through the walls very closely.
See, but once again, I think, even though the two are coupled, we're starting to get them a little mixed up again, because it probably would be a stipulative definition of entertainment, meaning that Greg started his discussion tonight with, I know I've been loud, I'm just asking for three hours on Sunday, and it's gonna be more diminutive. It's not gonna be loud. It's gonna be more of not what I have been doing, which is a loud band.
Correct. I, I know what I can do and what I cannot do.
So, once again, I mean, I imagine an entertainment license, and I have to admit that I don't exactly know the process, but I imagine an entertainment license is gonna be a public hearing. I imagine it's gonna be, you know, more than what it would take to grant you the privilege of three hours on a Sunday. So, and I don't even know, there could be fiscal, not fiscal, physical requirements for the building, you know, because you could, could have more people in it, who knows? I mean, entertainment after the nightclub fire in Rhode Island, or it's caused all kinds of different regulations.
Agreed. And, you know, with that being said, is that, you know, we're, we're capacity at ninety-eight. We've stuck to that, you know, I mean, during the benefits, maybe so, it got a little more than that. But I'm trying to follow the, the letter to the law to figure out how to run my business, make it successful without upsetting the apple cart. And it's, it's such close quarters down there, it's hard to do to, like, he said, it's just, I've been trying to... Any, any complaints I have, I face head-on, and I try to solve everybody's problems. But I know what not, and, and what to do now. So it's really difficult to, you're not gonna appease everybody. But if I can help assess what I'm trying to do in a low-mannered way of, of trying to make my business better, you know?
Let me just make a couple comments, and first I'll put my farmer punting board chair hat on, and then I'll... I'm also an acoustics expert, so then I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the acoustic problem. But, you know, normally in zoning, we try to keep uses like these separated. So we have our commercial districts, and we have our residential districts. But because of history and grandfathering, we have a situation where not only are the lots unusually small, but we've got this mixture of pre-existing businesses and so on. So that be it, and of course, as selectmen, we're, we're doing our best to encourage the success of business in town, you know, given all these other constraints. So we're starting with a situation that, you know, arose because of history and not because of good planning. And I'll put my acoustics hat on, and this business of the buildings with conventional construction are very lousy at attenuating low-frequency sound, namely that bass and the drum beat and so forth. So we've got this problem that without going to more of specialized-type construction, even with the windows closed and so forth, you're gonna have a hard time keeping that sound from getting out of the building. And the only thing you can do, if you're trying to reduce the outside sound level, is to try to convince your, your performers to crank down the volume. And of course, in this modern world, that's not usually what the audience wants to hear. You know, they wanna feel the music as well as listen to the music.
True.
So we've got that going on as well. So, you know, we're sort of conflicted in multiple dimensions. And since I've been on the board, we've, I don't believe we've ever had an application of entertainment license. So like Jeff, I don't really know what the process is for doing that. So even if, you know, with our next issue, I'm not even sure what that entails. Do we have to have public hearings, and what, I don't even know what the process is.
I guess, I think you've been in talking to Sam?
Mm-hmm.
Now, to get the entertainment license, have, have you like plotted a direction that you need to go for that, or...
You know, we have, but it's the, it comes down to, we're not a nightclub.
Yeah.
So if, with that being said, it's, you know, it's us basically trying to keep the music down to a, you know, with, with the soundproofing and, and everything. I mean, it's, it's really tough if a motorcycle goes by in the summertime, and it rips down through Palm Island. I mean, it wakes up. And is there a sound decibel that's acceptable?
There's laws for that specifically, but, you know, unless you have an officer with the right equipment in the right place at the right time, it's very hard to enforce those laws.
You know, it's a, the island is a, is a unique place down there, with the fireworks going off, and there's a lot of, I mean, it's, it is what's acceptable. It's, it is what it is, and it's, and I try to, trying to play it by the, by the book, and it's, you know, I, I've done, I shouldn't say I've done, we've, you know, in the last two and a half years, we've raised more and donated more money than we've taken in in profit, doing benefits, and for our neighbors and our, you know, and for the island. And it's, it's really hard for me to grasp what's, it's, it's, it's not an unreasonable request that I'm asking. And I'm trying to head this on every basis that's coming our way to solve the problem.
Yeah. Going back over the histories, I understand that, that there was a period when the business had both the restaurant license and the entertainment license. But I don't know, was it run fundamentally in a different way than what you're trying to do today?
You know, it's, it's funny, because we could've went for a twelve-thirty liquor license. We choose to have a eleven-thirty last call. If we had the entertainment on, on Sundays, it ended at ten. If it went over five minutes, we got called on it. So we, I know that we're so close-knit down there. I, you know, I, I don't even, it's funny, because if another restaurateur got into this restaurant, pick one, that would serve till twelve-thirty, one o'clock, and it would be a lot worse than what you're, what people were realizing, that if you had another neighbor in there, it, it could be a lot worse.
Now, do you have more to add on the other thing? The second thing we've got on the agenda is to, what's it say?
Entertainment.
Discuss the possibility of... Discuss the possibility of acquiring an entertainment license. I think we should close out C first, and because he's looking at...
I think you're right.
A different thing.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And what we're looking at is a one-time thing from three to seven P.M. on a Sunday afternoon, evening.
One-shot license.
One-shot license.
Yep.
Okay. So that was the motion, that was seconded, so...
Yes, it was.
Do we have any more discussion, or do you wanna vote on that one?
Vote on that one, get it out of the way.
Okay. All in favor of that one-time thing?
Aye.
Aye, for one time.
Aye. Okay, well, okay. Three ayes, and any opposed? Okay, one opposed. Okay. So that's done.
And I would probably like to just say that you've had a license down there, I mean, you've had the ability to have a restaurant down there. You've done this before. We've done this for other restaurants before. The way you were doing it wasn't working. So taking and doing this, which is the one-time, it certainly behooves you to see, you know, if you can make it work well, so that where we go from here, that this one-time license works so well, that everyone says, well, maybe it won't be so, you know what I'm saying? So do a good job with it.
Right. So we're onto D?
Yep.
Okay. Number D. We're gonna be here all night. Okay? The possibility of an acquiring an entertainment license. Now, what would you like to ask us?
I would like to have music from three to seven on Sundays.
On, on Sundays?
And that's it, yep.
All right. To, I don't know, I don't have any knowledge on this granting it for the whole year or permanent, honestly. And I would like to talk to Sam, the code enforcement officer, and see what regulations there are for it, and then get a report at the next time, at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Well, on top of all of that, shouldn't the neighbors at least have a say in it?
Which could happen with that...
Yep. Well, I mean, we'll...
Absolutely. They should all have a say in it. I mean, if, if...
Well, I mean, I think we need to understand the legal requirements, and then we can always do things on top of that if we think it's needed, so...
So you wanna, you wanna table this, or...
Yeah, and can you ask Sam to look into it for us? Okay. All right, good. Thank you, Greg.
Okay.
So that's, that's the proceeding.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a comment on this situation? No?
Yeah, you know, I'd like to give a comment on that.
Bob Connor's thirty-nine Annapolis Way. I, I think we all remember driving by the, the Beach Coma when it was closed for a number of years and falling into disrepair. And I think Kathy and Greg have done a wonderful job on bringing that back, employing people. And, but I think all of your points tonight are well-taken, at finding some happy medium so that there's, there's a consensus of how to move forward. But it does seem that the hour's requested seemed very reasonable. But thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right. Okay. So we'll get some information from Sam, and we'll let it be known, we'll put it on the agenda so if anyone's got any comments. And if you could pass it to your neighbors, so they can, we can make it an open forum. Okay? Good. Thank you. All right. Use of the, I think... Use of the Upper Green by the North Shore Cyclists as a rest stop for their Blazing Saddles Century Ride on Saturday, August sixteenth, two thousand fourteen.
She's not here tonight. She's gonna be here on the twenty-second.
Okay, so, on the twenty-second. Request on behalf of the Neurofibromatosis Northeast to include Newbury on the route of their fourth annual Coast to Cure Bike Ride Saturday, September sixth. Anyone here? No? All right. Is this a repeat, or is this a new one?
It's a repeat.
It's a repeat? Okay, we had no problem with it before. Okay. Motion?
And they don't really use the facilities. I think they just ride through towns, so...
Okay. All right, motion?
Sure.
Second? Questions, discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good. All right. One-day liquor license for Baker N.S. bartending for a wedding, May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, four-thirty to ten-thirty at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm. All the paperwork in order, Kathy? It is, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a commercial clamming license, proof of residency, Peter Moran. Okay, we got, there's something in here on that? I didn't see it.
The documents. He gave, I think he's kinda pissed off, because he gave us a big stack of documents, although surprisingly, you know, I'm used to this kind of thing for, you know, typically, like, state colleges and universities require proof of residence sometimes and things like that. We should really come up with some sort of letter, not that this comes up very often, but just sort of a standard letter suggesting what they ought to supply, because typically, it's a driver's license, registration from your car, and tax forms or something.
Proof of residency, yeah.
Yeah.
He doesn't drive, and he doesn't have a car.
Okay, so...
That's why we have what we have.
But still, presumably, if, if...
Those would just be N.A. on the thing, I thought.
Yeah, okay. But then, you know, the other one is a, tax documents, and of course, if there's, one of any of these things, if there's any sensitive personal information, that's not active, but just...
Maybe I can add something.
Okay.
I think we should check and see if fifty-three Spring Hill Road is on the, I believe the West Newbury-Dubie Line is the center line of the road.
Thirty-three is Spring Hill. It's, it's in Newbury.
Thirty-three?
Yep.
All right. If he's on one side, he is a Newbury resident. If he's on the other side, he's a West Newbury resident.
Mostly says the house is in Newbury, so...
Okay, so we got, what we've got here is, let's start out with a motion.
Yeah. Okay, all motion approved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now, what we have here is a court thing.
Yeah.
Now, that just shows that, I guess that's showing he went to court for something, and that's his address, right?
That's where he was served.
That's where he was served, so...
Probably when he lost his life.
He was served there, so I guess the court figures that's his residence.
He has a state shellfish permit that's issued to that address.
Yeah, okay. So he's got the state, so... And then...
A bank account, I think.
A bank account. All right. And Leslie said that he meets the, her interpretation of a resident.
Yeah, and she even gave him a, a form to fill out to become a registered voter in town, which he's not, but...
Okay, but, so he's filled out, he's not, now a registered voter, probably. Okay? So...
I mean, I don't know how this issue arose in the first place, but was there any...
We pulled it when we signed the commercial licenses, because Leslie said...
You couldn't find anything about that?
Yeah, that he wasn't a registered voter, so...
So it's not like someone's saying that actually he's really lives in New Hampshire or someplace like that? It's just that we didn't have the data in town.
So he was questioned and came up with this documentation?
Yeah. And it's...
Any comments or questions? Mike, Chuck?
So he's here for our approval for a license?
Yeah.
Right. And it was just a question of residency.
Yeah, and what it was, was...
I mean, we have no reason to deny him if he's a resident, correct?
Exactly.
So there you go.
Okay.
Certainly, the available data is pretty consistent.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Request for a banner on the backstop, Newburyport Choral Society for their spring concert. The other representative, okay?
Representing Joanne Johnson, and as the Choral Society's been doing for the past several seasons, they're requesting a back, a banner on the backstop for the two weeks preceding the, the concerts, which will be on May third and fourth.
Okay.
And it would come down the Monday after the Sunday concert.
And again, we always ask the size of the banner?
I think it's, it's the same size as it was before. I think it's, what, eight feet by thirty inches high, something like that.
Okay. Okay, so this was the same one that was on there?
Yeah, same, same size.
Okay. Second?
Motion to, yep, second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, she's going to put it on, and is going to take it down, we're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. These minutes, these are the ones that you sent around, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, who was there or not there? Attendants.
Story via Bel Airson Walker, um, David was absent that week, so.
Okay.
Motion to approve as, uh, read.
Second?
Second.
Okay. No, any questions, additions, deletions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Communications, we have a Comcast letter, change of filing date of the PCC filings. What's that about, Tracy? Do you know? What, do you know, Kathy?
No, I have no idea. It must be something that's in the contract, that they have to keep us notified.
Is this, is this the only letter that we got, this one? This letter? Yep. Okay. Makes sense to you?
I mean, it doesn't surprise me that they have to file something with the Federal Communications Commission.
All it is, is an acknowledgement that we got the letter, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Done. D E P, a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. It's a grant.
Yeah, did that seem like something we're, it seemed like we might be eligible for something like that.
Martha's just laughing. What?
They don't really know, I don't know, nothing about that program, so.
Can you read it?
Yes.
I can't see.
You want me to read the whole thing?
I do. Yes. Department of Environmental Protection. Dear Municipal Official, on behalf of the Patrick Administration, it is my pleasure to announce the availability of two thousand fourteen Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Municipal Grant Application. Martha, you got another one. The Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, an acronym S M R P, was authorized under the Green Communities Act, Mass D E P Regulations three-ten C M R nineteen dash three hundred to provide grants to Massachusetts municipalities and regional government entities for recycling, composting, reuse, and waste reduction activities in support of the state's solid waste master plan goals. This year, the S M R P application includes an exciting new initiative, the Recycling Dividends Program with initials R D P, which will provide payments to municipalities that have implemented programs and policies proven to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. R D P will deliver benefits in two ways, it will reward the communities with modern recycling programs, which I, we have the, incentivize those with less effective programs to take strategic steps to improve them. The S M, the S M R P application also provides municipalities with the opportunity to request funding for pay-as-you-throw programs, startup, recycling food waste cots, roll-off compacters, waste reduction enforcement, coordinating funding, school recycling programs, and organic capacity projects. Last year, Mass D E P awarded two point four seven million dollars to a hundred and thirty-six communities and regional entities through the S M R P. S M R P is funded by the Waste Energy Credits Expendable Trust created under the Green Communities Acts to assist your community, da-da-da-da-da. The deadline for submitting is June eleventh. That's, I mean, I don't know, I mean, even though, I mean, don't we do all those things at our, uh, facility that we happen to lease, but I mean, still, we do it. So why don't?
I can forward it on to the Board of Health for their review.
I was just going to say, you know.
It seems like composting is the one thing we don't.
We don't do right now.
That might, that would fit naturally into that.
Yep.
But still, I mean, I just, doing a quick calculation in my head, you know, twenty thousand dollars is enough money to get me interested. You know, if I just take the average per, per community.
Yeah.
Especially if we want to do it anyway, or are doing it anyway.
Okay, I think that-
I will.
Forward to the Board of Health, and then, uh, someone should attend one of these and see if it's worthwhile.
I'll follow up with them.
Okay, that's done. We have a-
It's a lesson, that bit.
An article from the Christian Science Monitor Magazine here, and it's just an awareness thing about, uh, the problems that, uh, our societies have in with heroin. And this article is written, uh, neighborhoods, and it was a lot of stuff about Newburyport here. It's close, we need to be aware of it. I know, people have been watching the, reading the daily news, um, I think every two or three days, there's been an article about some sort of heroin busts, activities, and whatever, and, uh, so, it's a concern, and everyone's got to be aware of it, so. That's it, um.
I know it only too well.
Yeah. All right. Uh, have anyone been, any meetings that we need updates from?
Just a brief update from the Media Committee, that, uh, we're in the final stages of specifying and, uh, what we need for the equipment, to have a projection screen, you know, it'll be motor-controlled, that, the idea is that the projection screen will be over here next to the town accountant's office. It'll be in the ceiling, but motor-controlled, so we can drop it down for a meeting. We'll have a, ceiling-mounted projector, and then, uh, like, probably on the wall, right there next to the door to the planning office, we'll have a place to plug in the cable from the laptop, although, the other thing we're looking into is that it would really be nice to have a podium that we could bring out for these purposes, you know, on wheels. And, uh, what we do in some of our bigger lecture halls at, at BU is the podium actually has its own little cable, and so there'll be like a little thing on the floor, like we have under this table, that when you want to use it, you just plug the podium into the floor, and then, then all the connections are right there on top of the podium, so when someone puts down their laptop, uh, it's real simple, they don't have to go looking around, or you don't have to worry about people tripping over the cord or stuff like that, so. But we're, we're pretty close to having a, a, a final specification, and likewise, with this idea of sort of, I don't know what to call it, but kind of the display or billboard-type TV monitor, it's basically a widescreen TV, that we can either run announcements, say, of upcoming events and stuff, just on a cycling basis, like we do with the dead time on the cable channel, or we could do any kind of video, so if we wanted to playback meetings, or some of the more things of community interest, like, uh, Jim Cunningham in the Strump in the Woods, talking about the old mine sites and things like that, that's the kind of thing, so. You know, we heard quite a bit of interest in that sort of thing from folks around town halls, so we're, again, getting down to the last dollar, if not nickel and dime, as far as what that stuff's going to cost, and we think we've got a, a, a good vendor for this stuff, is, the vendor's on the state list, um, and it's, in our preliminary explorations, the prices are pretty much the same from these different vendors, so we don't see any clear advantage financially for going, you know, going through the formal bidding process, but it just gets a lot easier if we can go with one of the state-approved vendors, so that's, pretty quickly, this information will be passed on to Tracy, and of course, the, all this is funded through money from Comcast, so it doesn't come out of our general tax revenues, so there's no impact on the tax rates and the like, so.
Great.
So we're getting really close, and then, it'll probably take a month or two, once we sign the contract, to actually get everything installed and up and running, and just cabling and power issues and stuff, but that's where we're at with the project.
All right, that's about it. All right, so we're moving on to the, um, warrant. Yeah.
We can, um, might as well start with the special town meeting, and the only two articles that, um, will be appearing on the warrant at this point in time that I've been notified, uh, the, um, payment to Northeast Mosquito Control for the balance that we owed in a previous year for the green head traps, and that's fifteen eighty-one. And the other article will be our snow and ice deficit, as of this evening, it stands at a hundred and fifty-six thousand, six ninety-four. In the event that it should increase from that amount, um, we do have the ability to go to the reserve fund for funding or do year-end transfers if approved by both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so that's the special.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Question. Uh, with, in the Finance Committee, we discussed the feasibility of putting the snow and ice de, uh, deficit on the town warrant for an override consideration, given the size of it, and a hundred and fifty-six thousand will come out of operation funds for extra state or, or, or existing funds. And I don't know whether or not a in-depth dialogue has been discussed as to the pros and cons of saying this was a significantly strong snow and ice year, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. I think it's a request that should be considered to be placed in front of the voters, to see whether or not they will approve a one-time override for that expense.
Larry, can we ask who's here from the Finance Committee? You might as well come up and sit up front, because you didn't go to the microphone, and I'm not sure how much of that was picked up.
I'll, I'll go to the microphone.
Well, before we go a lot farther, it's too late to put an override on the ballot. Okay, so, it's something that, if we, if as a town, we got our act together a little bit better.
What is the deadline?
Yesterday. Okay. What?
Actually, yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday, that's what I said, yeah.
But Larry's brought up a good point, I mean-
He did.
What, what you would want to consider, it, since we don't have enough levy capacity in fiscal year two thousand fifteen to increase the snow and ice budget like we wanted to do, um, you can, uh, propose an override in the fall.
Yeah.
Or you could do it for the next fiscal year's operating budget, but it, it does need to be addressed, we're, we're consistently having-
No, I think it's a, I think that's a really good ideal, Larry, and-
It's a substantial amount of money.
It is.
You know, and it could be used for some of our operational departments, because it comes out of their, their fund, and we could do something with that that I think would be beneficial to the town operation. I think it's a justifiable cost this year.
Yeah, no.
That's the right.
I'm in, I'm in agreement, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's something that-
No bogeymen for me.
If it comes up in the future, then, that may be one of the first things we should look at, because we've never considered it before.
Yeah, I mean, especially pointed out, we know we've got to increase the budget, it's just that because of the fiscal constraints, we haven't been doing so. But then, this year, everyone has to admit it was unusual.
Yeah.
You know, it's not typical, so even if we did increase the budget to something that's closer to our historical average, you're still occasionally going to get one of these big snow years, and, uh,
Yeah.
we're going to weigh over even a, a better budget than we have, and.
We've got the regular, the town meeting here, what I'd like to do is, if I could, is do something a little bit out of order. I'd like to take the last article, thirty-four. And the reason I'd like to is, there's people that are here, and for them to wait for the whole thing, for this one article. What this is, what this is worded is, to see if the town will vote to instruct the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court, Court, to adopt the following. Be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled, and by the authority of the same as follows. An act directing the commissioners of fisheries, wildlife, and recreational vehicles to convey certain land in Newbury to Richard Boudreau and Pauline Boudreau. Section one, for the purpose of promoting the public good, the commissioner of fisheries, wildlife, and recreational vehicles is hereby authorized and directed to convey to Richard Boudreau and Pauline Boudreau in the name and on behalf of the Commonwealth, by acquitclaim deed, approved as to form by the Attorney General the following described land situated in Newbury on the south-westerly side of Moody Street, so-called, bounded, and described as follows. And we have a description of the property here. And I think the best thing, what I'd like to do is, um, Connie, um, Gutierrez, uh, she's representing the Boudreaux's, and she can give, if she gave, uh, the, the whole explanation, I mean, it would be here for quite a while, but she can kind of give it, and then if anyone's got any questions, they can ask her. Welcome.
What happened here is, back in nineteen forty-five, the federal government took approximately twelve thousand acres of land in Newbury and surrounding communities. At the time, approximately fifteen years later, it was then conveyed to the Commonwealth of Mass. When the property was taken, of course, notices go out to the people whose land is being taken. Unfortunately, the land that the Boudreauxs subsequently purchased was owned by a gentleman who was already deceased. Twenty, his heirs subsequently conveyed the property to another family, and those people subsequently conveyed the property to the Boudreaux's. Unbeknownst to the Boudreaux's, in nineteen sixty-nine, they purchased this property, built a home on this property, and for the past forty-five years have lived on this property, raised a family, sent their daughter to school here in Newbury, paid taxes to Newbury. The town has treated this property as if it is owned by the Boudreaux's. We subsequently learned that it is claimed by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. So what we're looking to do, we, we discovered, there's other, there were other people that were affected by this taking as well, from back in nineteen forty-five. And the way that those people, these two families in particular, obtained relief was by, uh, going to the legislature, having a homeroom petition brought before the legislature, and this petition that was passed by the House and the Senate directed the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife to convey the property, it clears the title. So at this point, the Boudreaux's are attempting to clear the title to their property, property that they believed was their own since nineteen sixty-nine, and they are here today, Richard and Pauline Boudreau.
Why don't we do a motion and discuss it?
Motion.
On this article?
Second.
Second.
Yep.
All right, any questions? Comments?
Okay, I'll, maybe I'll start. I'm somewhat familiar with this problem because of my interests in regional planning, as well as, uh, being a sportsman and environmental advocate, and, uh, you know, these things vary all over the place. And I'm also someone who's bought and sold an awful lot of real estate over the years, so, on the real estate side, I'm really puzzled that nobody caught this. You know, I can't imagine buying a property without a proper title search, for example, and that type of thing.
They purchased the property with cash, there was mailbag involved.
Yeah, I know, but even when I buy, pay cash for land, in the last couple of major transactions, I paid cash for the land, and then found other means to finance the building or whatever, uh, still, had that, that title search, uh, done, and-
We did have a title search.
What?
We did have a title.
Okay, and you, but you didn't get title insurance, apparently?
No.
Okay, uh, because I usually get the title insurance as well, but so be it, because again, most people aren't very experienced in these things, uh. So, but when the bank got involved, I mean, I read through all these documents, and, you know, I'm surprised the bank didn't catch it, if nobody else did.
Well, the bank didn't get involved until the nineties.
But even so, why didn't they catch it then?
Why would they go back to nineteen forty-five? There's really no reason to search title beyond, I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head, but you don't generally go back-
What you're saying is, it's not modern practice, that I have-
It is not any practice, we do a lot of closings in our office, and we don't go back to nineteen forty-five when we're researching.
And I found a cloud of titles, in my experience, that go back to nineteen hundred or something, and, uh, so. But again, then, there's the, but then, um, on the other side of the equation, some of these cases were people who've attended, attempted, or in some cases, successful to get, uh, land from fish and wildlife from that period when the federal government was planning and expanding the wildlife refuge. In some cases, it looked to me like a pure property grab, where in this case, it's very clear that, you know, we have very well-meaning folks who have built a home, lived there for years, paid taxes, and so on, so, uh, it's not directly comparable with some of the other things I know about, so. But I'm just wondering, did you contact the state to see if, where they were coming from, and what was their response?
I did, um, the initial conversations I had was with an attorney, Beverly Vuxen, who was actually quite helpful in providing me some documentation for the other family that went through this in Georgetown. Once I approached her about attempting to work it out directly with the division, I was transferred to another attorney who was not so receptive, and basically indicated to me that, uh, there was no cause of action against the Commonwealth of Mass, we can't get, uh, adverse possession against the Commonwealth of Mass, if my theory is equity, they don't do equity. And if we wanted to try to get this property, we were going to have to do the same thing that the people in Georgetown did. So he was not very receptive, and we contemplated filing suit, we're short-cutting it, why go to land court when ultimately, we're going to end up having to go to the legislature to get an, an act passed?
Because I know, you know, from that period, the whole taking in the first place was so controversial, that the feds backed off, and that's why the, the land that wasn't given back to the previous owners ended up being given to the state for the wildlife management areas that we know today.
Well, i- if you look at the map, actually, that the town has, the, the thing that's curious, um, I don't, it was in your packet, I believe, this map. I'm curious about this person here, smack dab in the middle of the- I'm curious about this person here smack dab in the middle of the property that was taken. He's somehow managed to retain title to his property. I don't know how. But the Boudreaux's are right here on Moody Street, and there are one, two, three, four, five houses in a row. The other four, for some reason, have title to their property, but the Boudreaux's do not.
I'm, as for my chair of the planning board, I'm very familiar with these inholdings, and everyone who knew what the story was is probably along dead by now or something. So, it's, it's, it's hard. And in some cases, the state has been cooperative and arranged land swaps and the like to sort of work out something with the owners of these land holdings. But as you say, it kind of depends on the year and who you're dealing with, how they choose to deal with it, and it sounds like they're...
You going to comment?
I do. I'm not a lawyer. I don't understand any of this. What I see in front of me right now, decades-long residents coming to us for a hand. I vote yes, let's go. Let's help them.
Thank you.
I want to help them the best I can. I want them to get title to their property.
Thank you.
Whether it's been precedent to absolute.
Yeah. I mean, again, I'm not asking these questions because I'm trying, I'm thinking I'm going to vote against it, that, you know, it is something that's puzzled, all these other situations have puzzled me over time. And also, I mean, at the end of the day, we, the residents of Massachusetts, are the owners of this, the land in question, according to, you know, the legal title thing. So, we're basically, in some ways, petitioning the legislature to say, okay, we, as a small fraction of the total residents of the Commonwealth, are saying that, really think that things got badly screwed up, and the best way to resolve this is the homeroad petition. So, that's kind of, you know, and it's, as many people know, I've been pretty active in a lot of environmental issues. But at the end of the day, both as, I was always very pragmatic as environmentalist when I was an activist, and now as a selectman, I'm also very pragmatic. And at the end of the day, I like to see people be able to hang on to their homes, whether it's because of some weird thing like this, or just because of, you know, issues on Plum Island or whatever. So, I also am supportive of the...
Thank you.
All in favor of putting this article on the...
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, and good luck to you. All right. Back to the beginning.
Can I ask you to go back to the special town meeting and take votes, so I can record them for the book?
Oh, all right, we didn't vote in.
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay, yes. All right, special town meeting, motion?
Article one.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
The whole thing, we talked about article one and two.
Okay.
Oh, you can do both, sure.
Yeah, just, just a special town meeting.
Yeah. All right. We talked about it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, and I don't know, are you, do you, does the board want to prepare a letter for the booklet, for the town meeting? If that's something you want to work on, or...
Okay, yeah.
You usually do...
Like a statement?
An opening statement, if you're interested.
The board is...
Yeah. We're doing our best.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the special town, I mean, to the annual town meeting. Article two just really sets the salaries. I'm a little curious about that article, so I did ask Town Council why we do this. I'm not seeing this done in other communities because it's appropriated in the operating line item budget, so that may or may not be removed. I figure if we don't need to have it, less is probably better.
You mean, you mean in... I've always been puzzled by that myself.
Me too, yeah, yeah. Do you want to go through each of the appropriations, or go through the entire thing and then approve it as a single article? I don't know how you...
Yeah, let's just go through the whole thing and then...
Okay.
In our discussion, we can go back to the individual line items.
Sure. The first, the first line item that sees an increase is the admin and finance salary and wages. Basically, what you see through all of the salary and wage line items is a two percent increase for the non-contractual employees of the town.
This administrative financial salary and wage line item is a new item that we have not seen prior to, at least that it's been comprised, comprised of consolidating other departments together, is that correct?
Correct. When you passed the legislation, created the Department of Administration and Finance, you never addressed it in your line item operating budget. So, what we follow is called the Uniform Municipal Accounting System, and that's what we have. I serve as town administrator, as well as finance director, treasurer, collector, town accountant, they all come under that.
I have no problem with that. This is a new line item, and is composed of subsequently, last year in our last budget, three or four different lines.
Sure.
I'd like to see a notation as to what it does contain, because we would be, if we had a rejection, if somebody said, wait a minute, we're paying two sixty-seven for administrative finance salary, what's going on? I'd like to see it either indented to show what it contains, for a transition year.
Sure.
Just being the transition year from oh fourteen to fifteen. Fourteen, we had individual line items that were composed that total number.
Sure.
And it would be easy for us to defend it. If somebody put a hole on it, it's a big number, and then have somebody kind of futz around and say, well, what does this really contain? It contains the following, somebody...
How about if I break it out in the rationale, in the booklet, the appropriation booklet?
It doesn't appear to the citizens voting in town meeting.
Yes.
It's definitive or not. I'd like to see the notations at the bottom of this article of what it does contain, because it's a transition, subsequent year from now on would be a problem. This, I think, is going to cause tremendous confusion at town meetings if we show a live item like this without some definition.
Okay, I'll include the breakdown in the rationale underneath the article.
Okay.
There's a reduction in the tax title and foreclosure account of thirty thousand dollars. We've taken the largest amount of them over the last two years, so we expect to see a decline in the amount of legal action that we need to pursue.
So, how many properties do we have outstanding in that category?
There were over thirty. I don't know how many are left. I can provide an update.
They made very good progress in that dimension.
Mm-hmm. The assessors' salary and wages account, we, through a reorganization of that office, we realized a savings of a little over six thousand dollars, six thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars. What I am recommending doing is using all of that savings and some more to increase the Council on Aging Salary and Wage Account for, to add back one of the positions that's been lost since two thousand and nine. Assessors' expense has a slight increase. Let's see. Town clerk salary and wages, again, all the salary and wages, everything you see here is just a two percent increase. Elections are going up based on the number of elections that are going to be held. That fluctuates, it goes up and down depending on how many you have each year. Pictometry in my map, this is the year of the flyover. That's, they tend to do that every three years. They didn't do it the last time, I know, because they couldn't get enough communities, but...
Right now, they're on the speed cycle.
Two, yeah. Okay, so every two years.
I mean, I think that's one of those things that, you know, percentage-wise, is a huge increase, and most people don't even know what this is. So, I presume, Martha, you would be the one that would be explaining it. Questions come up with this.
The reason is, they didn't do it last year.
No, but I mean, there's two parts of this. There's the ongoing sort of expense, that the data we get, you know, gets used in the in-between years as well. So, there's sort of an ongoing expense, and then periodically, they do another flyover, and then we've got to pay for that, so it's just that...
And actually, one reason, one reason it's, it's this, this much of an increase this year is because there wasn't a flyover last year, but the one, the year before, we were able to, usually, we can budget the cost of the flyover to two fiscal years, and the previous time, we were able to actually cover it in one fiscal year. So, otherwise, there probably would have been something that was spread out a little bit more evenly than we're proceeding here.
But I'm just thinking, you know, when you, those words pictometry and the acronym MMAP, I know what they are, but I think very few people in town have a clue what this stuff is or what it's good for. And in fact, you know, it's my impression that these tools have been very favorable received by the people that need to use them in town hall and our first responders and so on. So, it's, you know, I think it's, it's a real bargain, quite honestly, to get that kind of capability for this sort of price.
Not, not to elabor the fact, but in other years, we were able to take in, you know, the flyover costs were broken up into two years instead of one, like it is this year in fifteen.
Obviously, we had an appropriation from free cash which was able to cover it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't we get like a better deal by paying for it that one time, two years ago?
I think it worked out.
Yeah, I think we get, by paying for it that one time, we got a better deal, and we bought into that, if I'm not mistaken. Frank, did you have something?
I just wanted to clarify a thing, and Tracy can correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these line items, like reserve fund, was at the, in the previous draft, was a hundred thousand, it's now ninety, and that's, there's going to be some reductions like that from the previous draft because of the loss of any override attempt of about a hundred forty-seven thousand, so there's going to be some shrinkage in some of these line items. Is that correct?
Right, but what you have in front of you tonight for voting does not include the previous increases.
This is the current, up-to-date, as of, as of today, yeah.
Yep. Utilities, the two thousand dollars increase, that basically just reflects the actual amounts needed to cover costs. Same thing with property-related services. Between repairs, maintenance, property-related services, and utilities, we've been looking at the last two years' worth of histories where that's another one of those newly-created accounts. Insurance expense...
Can I just go over that, though?
Sure.
Because I'm really worried that we're using, you know, sort of our land, our land sale fund to fund things that are really routine maintenance, just such as, we delayed them long enough that we could bundle a bunch of, together and reach the capital...
Sure.
...category. But I'm, going forward, I think, you know, even with this number, we're still underestimating what the real ongoing cost of maintaining our buildings. And pretty soon, you know, we've sold the crown jewels, and there's no money left in the, the land sale fund.
That's right.
And we've really got to figure out how to do things right, you know, and not have to use essentially capital-type funding to pay for the fact that we're not doing a good job of maintaining our buildings.
I agree with that completely, and that, that's the whole premise behind creating the stabilization funding program. So, you, the Capital Planning Committee identifies the assets, the inventory, and the stabilization fund funds it.
I'm just saying that we're not at the budget level yet that we need to be...
Not with many of these items, and, and the reason we aren't is because we simply don't have the levy capacity.
I understand that, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Insurance expense right now is projected at a ten percent increase. I haven't received the final notification. There was a question about bidding. We did go out and bid a couple of years ago. We're still not paying as much as we were when we bid it out. We use MYA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency. They're a very large purchasing collaborative. They are, in my opinion, industry leaders from municipal insurance. I, I don't think we could do better, but I did not go out to bid this year.
So, what, what fits into that category?
Property, casualty, and liability insurances.
So, it's a ten percent increase, basically?
Mm-hmm. That's what, that's not-to-exceed amount.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, we're worried about health insurance, but it's amazing how some of these other insurance costs can...
Yeah.
...jump up on us, too.
They do indeed. Salary and wages in the PD is, reflects the labor contracts, as well as the collective bargaining agreement. The, one of the things I did want to note is frequently asked, how many employees we have? We currently do have eleven full-time employees, which was reduced from, I think seventeen we had at the, at the height back prior to when I came. Shellfish Constable. That is something that, if you recall, we had a complaint lodged about a potential conflict of interest. We worked with the Ethics Commission to understand what the issues were, identified them, documented them, worked with the Personnel Board to create a job description for that position, obtained competitive data relative to salary, hours, and this was the proposal that we came up with for our presentation at town meeting for funding. It's not only an enforcement position, but it also, in the job description, attempts to keep the industry healthy with projects like reseeding and the likes.
Tracy, what was the amount that we get in fees?
A little over twenty-nine thousand right now, and our commercial clamming permit fee is three hundred dollars. I don't know that, normally, each year, we do an analysis of all our fees. I don't know if the clam commissioners have analyzed...
I don't remember anything.
I mean, the shellfish commissioners...
They're kind of not doing anything until we...
Until we address the issue.
It's going to be in conflict.
Right, right, so...
Potentially, this could become like a revolving fund.
I don't believe it can. I don't think the general laws would allow us to make it a revolving fund, but we could demonstrate, you know, we could report to town meeting how much we take in each year and how much we spend. But I, I did put in an email to DORI to get a ruling on that.
I believe we should do away with revolving funds in total, which I think is an okay principle that town has had for many years of putting money aside by fees and fines, and then using it to pay for the services of Haba Master and others. I think we should get away from that. My question is, is that if this was a surprise to us, and a significant increase because of conflict of interest, is it required or not required? Is it, you know, because I think that, you know, the due diligence of a, of a person who has a conflict of interest, if I read your comment correctly, resulting us needing to fund a full-time position, or I guess a full-time position, I don't know what that is, it's not with salary benefits and insurance, means a little bit more than the, the amount of money that's represented in that total amount. And job response, and, you know, I'm just trying to get my hands around, is how much of a need today we have to have it? Is it mandatory? You know, we do see environmental police are involved with our shellfish business, and I notice that we have not seen from the FinCom any job descriptions, you know, titles, activities to render a professional opinion, whether it's just a financial...
I'd be happy to provide you a job description.
Tracy, have we looked at possibility of regionalization, and where we went, when we went?
What do you want to talk about?
I mean, probably...
The question is, the question is yes, and we shouldn't go there.
Okay. There are different people ahead. Now, is, you know, I understand...
And I don't know if the position is mandatory.
One question, is that maybe our shellfish commissioners are elected?
No.
Are they appointed?
Our, our shellfish commissioners are elected currently. This is the shellfish constable. This is a completely different...
We need help?
Yes.
They have different...
The commissioners, like, set policy and stuff, and the constable is the enforcement guy.
But that's what, this, there was a conflict of interest with the commissioners?
Both. Both.
And the constable?
Both.
Because they're commercial clambers.
Here's what it is. The commissioners set policy, set regulations, and everything. They happen to be commercial diggers. So, every time they set a regulation or a policy that limits or extends digging days, they are affecting their own income.
Right, and it violates...
Okay, so that's where that comes in. So, we straightened that out. But the constable, okay, is a commercial digger, too, and he is in charge of making sure that everyone's clams are the right size and everything. And the thing is, he's checking everyone else's, who's checking his, that type of stuff.
Is he elected or...
He's appointed.[1758.23]
Why do we appoint somebody who is just putting him in a position?
That's what, that's, why, why? Because it was like for free, essentially, and he's down there every day on the flats.
He's already there because.
He's already there digging.
Just for information, what is the season? Is this a twelve-month season?
It is a twelve-month season.
Yes, it is.
And it's closed during weather conditions, red tide.
When they have the rain days and stuff, yep.
You know, you left out one thing. The other thing the shellfish constable does, very important, is he takes the samples every so many days.
That's right.
To Lawrence and they test them. And if they test positive for red tide and whatever, which is very dangerous, they close the flat, so.
I, I, a job description within, essentially, you know, that type of, and the question, for example, would be, you know, if, since Moore's a quasi-law enforcement or enforcement position, should it fall under a, a more, a different department, police department? So I'm not saying sure it should.
It does.
It does.
It does fall under the police department.
But will therefore still continue to appoint a shellfish constable?
Constable, yeah.
Because in, would that be the condition, this position?
If, if we appoint someone going in this direction by the job description and everything, we would appoint someone who is not a commercial digger.
Correct.
It's interesting, when you walk in, the, the science says clam flats are closed for border health. Which gets my thought, it, this testing is performed by the border health agent. I mean, it just, we're adding a forty thousand dollar position that really is probably sixty-five thousand or eighty thousand, the full burden benefits and all, going from four thousand dollars. And it just is, and, and again, not to second guess, we're going to have to speak, you guys have already beaten this thing.
Oh, let me tell you.
No.
If you go back over the minutes and stuff.
It's under, we're growing.
We're still trying to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we found we were having, we were doing multiple things wrong, basically, and, you know, and again, it was just sort of history, you know.
You get no documentation. It's going from four to forty thousand, it's just.
No, I think you raise a good point that when something like this comes along, at the very least, we should give you guys.
And right now, we're looking at.
It was just voted Monday night.
Ways of enhancing the revenue stream, okay, by this, okay? However, I've got to be with a couple of people with the state to see what we can do, all right?
I do believe the shellfish you see in town benefits a lot of our citizens, and I think it's something that we should take a real strong position.
Absolutely.
If this is rational, it's to protect the industry that they benefit from, then I support it wholeheartedly. I just did not know exactly what constitutes a job description and for a significant increase, and not knowing the details, I had to raise the question.
Right, the, the job description is written by the personnel board, they, their process.
I think, I think too, when we think of what the clam licenses produce for revenue as opposed to what it's going to cost us for a clam constable, we somewhat forget that some of these families, our clam industry in this town is sole source income.
I agree.
That's what he was saying.
What you said is.
It's a substantial benefit.
Absolutely.
I did not know it was required by law to protect their rights to issue licenses and things like that, but I guess the details were not there.
And, and as far as it goes, like, you were here earlier when we had the hearing on whether someone's a resident and qualifies for a license, and that comes up two or three times a year, okay, and it's usually brought up by the, the fish commissioners, okay? We're not so sure this guy really lives here.
So that they're claiming within the territory of you have to be a resident?
Yes, okay, so I mean, there's, it's, it's a whole subculture that the more you start to look at it, the more you know that you don't know.
And, and hopefully, what Joe said earlier, is that some of the management, you know, not just seeding, but maybe clamming too much in one spot, and hopefully, a lot of this is, is part of what the process will entail.
I think it's good to have this general discussion because these other line items that have been flat funded, that we should all be prepared to answer questions at town meeting when we go through this.
Yeah, I, I wonder if maybe somebody from personnel board is going to be available in case questions come up regarding job description and wage rate and other things like that related to the hiring of this person. I mean, it may not, but then again, this line item is possibly going to jump out at some people.
I, I think it will jump out, you know, and it's because like Larry talked about the other one. You go down the column and go, holy mackerel, what's going on here? Yeah.
I should also just mention as a little aside that we ended up having to really research the history of clamming, both in terms of state statute and in Newbury and Kathy and with some help with a few others that did an incredible job of, because, you know, there's, used to be fish wardens versus fish constables, and then the confusion between what's a fish commissioner and what's a fish constable, and, you know, it's, for those that like local history, it's a pretty amazing story how we got where we are today, so. I think so, yeah.
Okay. Fire protection wages, again, two percent increase, and the new line item that you see is a fire maintenance expense. It's been expressed that there have been issues with being able to keep up with the costs of maintaining their apparatus. So that's what the new ten thousand dollar line item is that you see there.
Again, this, this is a, this is another change in the line items that we had Friday. We had broken down individually by the once, by the fire department in protection one, protection two, multiple individual line items. Now, I don't have a problem with the consolidation of them in this thing, but a definition as to that this is happening and the rationale would be appropriate.
Sure.
Because moving forward, I guess, I researched, I guess this is the way it was done a long time ago. Changed to this new, to the way that we were doing it, and since it represents a change, I think it should be defined that this is now moving forward the way it's going to be categorized, and that they are combined the two. Just for clarification purposes, the individual administration of those line items will be the same thing, I would say.
The administration falls to the board of fire engineers. It is entirely up to them to administer that budget.
You're telling us that, and with this decision, if a.
Always has been.
Always has been?
The board of fire engineers have full authority over those line items. They did last year and they will this year.
Again, that should be defined as well.
Sure.
It is always identified as separate, and if there was no sketch, you know, saying that they shouldn't have, but now it's basically a change in the process.
Well, I think, brings up, you know, it's a more general point. Most people in town don't understand this complex relationship we have between the town's responsibility for fire protection and then the responsibility of the two fire companies, because most people think we just have a fire department like big cities do and.
Right.
Our relationship, you know, you know, you know, they provide certain services and we fund those services, and then we take care of the equipment purchases and, you know, that kind of thing.
We don't take care of it. We take care of some equipment personally.
Yeah, but they, you know, our, our two fire companies have done a pretty good job in many cases of.
This is representative, definition, presentation, giving document and notice that it's changed.
Yep, I can do that. That's my problem.
In the, being the liaison between the finance committee and the fire departments, I did have a chance to talk to Chief Pearson about this fire maintenance expense. And as he explained, that it was to maintain town-owned equipment that is within the possession of the fire companies and not their private equipment. Being the Air Scott Air Act, the potential addition of a, an engine at protection two. That was the intent of the fire company, that funding to maintain town-owned equipment needed to be provided, and that was the catalyst for.
And let's hope that the new piece of apparatus doesn't need significant maintenance.
Yeah, this goes back to Larry's point before. We're going to make sure we buy something, we're going to make sure.
Right, right. Definitely.
If we're on the fire company budget, I'd like to just interject some, some thoughts again, in talking with the fire companies. On the call fire wages, if we are increasing all other wages by two percent, it would seem certainly appropriate that we should be entertaining increasing that by two percent as well. This for, for consistency, and the same thing with the fire training wages. Following the next line item, fire company lease payments, that is by definition the old flat rate, which is, well, we've paid the two fire companies about seventy thousand dollars each to really lease their equipment and lease their space. Now imagine that we can lease a six or seven thousand square foot building, including all of the utilities, all of the maintenance and all of the equipment inside for seventy thousand dollars a year. Realistically, their operational budget is in the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar range in north. And likely, the reason we're now faced with buying a, an engine for protection two is the, the funding of the fire department's flat rate over the last several years. They've not been able to build the reserves to be able to maintain or to be able to replace equipment. I would propose that the fire company lease payments, the original request by the fire company was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I would propose that we increase this by a minimum of thirty thousand dollars, and that we reduce. And we, this is exactly what we did last year. We reduced the road improvement program from a hundred thousand to eighty thousand to increase the flat rate last year to provide the fire companies some recovery. And, and again, we're adding a new line item of thirty-six thousand for the clam constable. If we, if we weren't doing that, monies would be available for some of these other line items that have been flat, you know, just flat rated across the board. But I would strongly urge that if we can't meet the request of the fire company's budget requests, that we at least entertain, again, adding thirty thousand dollars.
Each side a complete.
Thirty thousand total, because it becomes fifteen thousand. It gets them from seventy to eighty-five thousand, Chuck. It's still ten short of what they've asked for. But I think if we don't look at funding that lease count or flat rate account, we're going to see more and more equipment needs coming down the road, and the sooner we get up to that point. The inevitable, who knows where we're going to be, but I think as long as we can prolong our current, our relationship with the fire companies, it's certainly in the best interest of the community and the citizens of the village. We lose sight of the fact, we call them private fire companies, these are five oh one C three charities that work very hard, day in and day out, donating a lot of time to subsidize the cost of fire protection for all of us in this room.
Let's carry that just a little bit further. If we increase them by thirty thousand each side, they can afford to.
Fifteen thousand.
May I finish, please? They can afford to buy a fire truck on their own, because that would make a very good fire payment. The owners would not be on the town anymore. They'd be able to do it the way they have since their inception, so, what do you think?
There's some merits there because their negotiating capability goes up substantially on what they can buy and how they can go about buying. You're actually correct. I think, but that's, that's something we don't have the time, I don't think, to pursue deeply. We can't put it, we can't say we're going to do an increase and then, and then not buy the fire truck and let them wait a year. So I don't, I don't know what, you know, I, I think we're kind of caught in the middle of the timing element. I think that the increases, you know, was, they've, they got one hundred and forty seven each side last year. And that was a ten, ten percent increase each side. This year, it's level funded at one forty again. So there's no increase to the flat rate where, I think, if some increase is warranted, I understand your point. It would make sense, but I think that's, the timing is tough in that scenario.
Well, I think, Chuck, the, you have a line item that's been added, but it's not funded, fire capital outlay. And I think you're seeing that add to different departments. It's the last line item. That would be the, the line item that I think the town would be proposing to fund for equipment purchases. I mean, I would here say, had we not had the fiscal constraints over the last dozen years that we've had, we probably wouldn't be faced with borrowing for buying a fire truck, because when I ran the numbers on fire department costs over a dozen years adjusted at three percent, it was, it was well over a million and a half dollar deficit of where we would have been if we had just went that goal.
Which would be consistent for every department in town.
Yeah, the same with everything.
It, it really isn't. The fire department versus the police's department in the same period of time, and you all have the spreadsheet. The police department was off by about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the same period of time with double the budget. So, I mean, the numbers, the numbers speak for themselves, but.
No, I, I think the, the motion, like, should be increased by, by some amount to, from the one forty. You know, it was brought out early, even increasing our own line items for, you know, utility costs is going to thrust. It goes up for them as well. You know, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it would be an increase to, to their utility of costs and things. And their insurance costs as well, which they cover under that amount.
Look what fuel's done.
Fuel and other factors, I think, you know.
The problem is, where does the money come from? I don't think Bob drives on the same roads in town that I do.
Exactly.
What we did, David, we created a one, a line item largely road improvement program. It was funded at a hundred thousand dollars, and it was derived from the savings on the Triton budget. The recommendation result was two hundred fifty thousand dollars was added to the stabilization fund. And a hundred thousand dollars was being parked in this one-time road improvement program because I think we all had our eyes wide open that the budget cost for Triton last year was, was really more of a formula glitch, where we saved two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we didn't want to invest that into an annual operating line item. So that's where we did reduce that by twenty to increase the, the flat rate. And here we are again, it's now reappearing. We have a warrant article here for two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars in chapter ninety funds. I mean, I think before we start investing annual operating dollars into road improvement dollars, we need to get back to ground zero on our public safety funding, and, and we're not there yet.
Can I clarify something? When you dropped down, and I might have gone to the, to the bathroom, when you dropped down to file lease payments, did you leave your train of thought for increasing the call wages, or was that still included? All right, because depending on how much or how far, what are our call wages now? Does anyone know exactly per hour for a guy to run into a burning building? Is it fifteen?
Fourteen, fifteen. Something sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, that, that would be the next discussion.
As we discuss this, at least for this selectmen, call wages is probably really important to me as opposed to maybe some increase in lease.
They might be connected in all ways, Jake and I, you can't really.
Call wages is a really different animal because it's not only the dollar per hour that we're paying these guys, but it's how many fires we have and how bad they are. And on average, if you look at the history, the, the fires are going down. So even if we, you know, we're giving people raises.
One of the things we have, David, is we have four full-time employees that work forty hours a week.
But those are not call.
But when they are on vacation, call firemen are used to fill, we don't have a fifth person to fill vacation holidays.
The hours that these guys get paid is something that's changing over time. So we've always had the issue of the full-time versus the call.
I think that under Tracy's guidance, they've now got a better reporting system as to who's going and what hours are being spent on work calls. I think the town is getting the handle around call five wages significantly. And it's kind of at the, at the core as to how they run their operations, and we've got a little standoff.
We've had discussions, you know, with Chief Pearson and so forth because of some issues related to the, the board of fire engineers. And, you know, one of the things he told us was that, yeah, the number of fires are going down because the fire prevention programs, whether it be smoke detectors and so on, are really having an impact. And this actually came up in the context of training and experience that one of the problems they're having is their younger guys aren't getting as much experience as in, in previous years because they're not fighting as many fires anymore. And so, you know, it's, it's, as I say, you know, like, when I think of a, a lease or something, I can think, well, I know how much it costs to maintain a piece of equipment or a building or something, and we've got sort of standard numbers from the, the corporate world and that kind of stuff, but this is, it's a little different animal because it's the product of the hours and the, the actual wages.
That was, of course, that was the source of our request, understanding, I don't understand that we had, we had a budget of one hundred fifty-seven thousand in two thousand fourteen. The request from the fire department was to increase that by forty-four thousand dollars. Now, I don't know what the benefits of the forty-four was, whether it was increasing salaries or, or, or anticipating more hours to be used. I don't know. I agree with you, I don't know. And yet, we were level funded at one fifty-seven, and it was not counted, so there was no increase in, from fourteen to fifty, no increase in out. And I, I'm not sure, I don't know whether it was a, it was a budget increase to give them a, a two percent per hour increase in pay.
Tracy's the one to get, has to take all these budget requests and.
There was, there's been money, since we've changed the way we account for it, there's been money left over in that account. So if. So if, the two percent increase is basically for, for full-time employees who are working for the town. That being said, if we want to adjust the call rate, it should go through the process just like everything else does. They should bring the information, the data, to the personnel board, just like you suggested, provide a job description, which we've asked for in the past, and complete that process, and then we would entertain it at that point. I mean, it's.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but I think that that's what's been missing, and we're really stirring the issue, is essentially an understanding of what, is what the challenge they're faced with and how to get the data from them to us. But yet, leaving that aside, to me, it seems rational to say if one fifty-seven was budgeted and approved, and said they didn't spend it all, there was a five thousand, ten thousand dollar under, underpayment that.
Based on the number of calls being reduced.
But I think we could anticipate saying we'll give them the same two percent raise, even though, because technically, I believe, when they do respond and the alarm goes off, they are town employees for that duration.
I would argue that they're all town employees, right?
Well, no, they're town employees as a call once the alarm. And I was trying to explain to somebody the other day that you cannot legislate or manage how many people show up. It's a kind of a, it's kind of a general call of ten people show, ten people get paid. Twenty people show, twenty people get paid. There's been some consensus in the past, why can't you say we only need five? Well, that doesn't work, because you don't show up one time, you, you, it doesn't work in the town. We're getting a, we're getting a benefit for it all, isn't it? But my question was, why did they ask for forty-four?
I, I have the answer if you'd like, because according to the Board of Fire Engineers, they requested the increase in call wages to add additional staffing for weekend coverage, to provide additional.
Thank you.
Staffing to both sides, which would be available. I mean, sometimes we lose sight of the fact that the staffing, is it for ambulance, is it for fire? It's for whatever call comes in.
It's for public safety.
And, you know, from my viewpoint, how do you staff a municipal position for cheaper dollars than call wages? And providing additional coverage on the weekend.
Weekends, holidays, and holidays also.
Well, however, the, the gap, Mike, that, again, with employees on vacation, sick days, holidays, that doesn't mean we don't have coverage. It doesn't mean we don't have that person. It, it's filling in all of the, the voids there. But to Tracy's point about having a job description and everything in place, it, it would follow the protocol we've established for everyone else.
And I would think you wouldn't, for what you just described, I don't think that would go in the call wages. I think that would go in the fire protection wages, the creation of a position, a weekend coverage position.
Rotation, I, I'm not sure.
Calls are calls.
The cost is still the same, whether it's one person or rotating.
Right. But we're working on kind of putting things into the appropriate cost centers. We've spent a lot of time doing that.
I've been listening to what David said and what Larry said and what Bob focused on, and probably Mike knows better than anyone. But for the amount of money that a call firefighter makes, it's not always easy to get people to respond to calls, especially when they're working in other times of the day, especially on weekends, if you're asking a guy to stay home and not go somewhere. So whatever we discuss, how well everyone knows everything about the fire department, it's still hard to understand what they have done well at doing, at least with what they've had. And I think what Bob said is the focus of what they'd like to try to do. And it might not mean that they're going to get fifteen dollars, or they're going to go up to sixteen dollars, or they go up to seventeen dollars. But at least also, someone will be getting some money to staff our fire departments during the weekends when it could be pretty hard to get response, because we don't have our full-time people on. And our full-time people on, if I understand, are the kind of here because of schools and everything else that occurs during the daylight hours.
And I, and I would think we have to assume that it's a struggle to maintain a call staff if you aren't giving them some hours to.
Make it bigger.
Make it worth their while.
And if it's not worth their while, they're going to go someplace else.
Other communities.
So that being said, without, without understanding every little nuance of how it goes, I think that's probably the focus of how it's proposed to go.
But I, I mean, Chuck, I would think that at, at, at the very least, I mean, I'm very concerned with the level of funding at the flat rate or lease payment, just for the reasons we state. Seventy thousand dollars to run a building and equipment just, it, it shows you how well these fire companies provide service and savings, because they're making up the shortfall, because realistically, it's a quarter million dollars, two hundred and fifty, they're, what, a twenty-five to twenty-fifty dollars a year to operate each one of these departments.
And I think everybody agrees with that, but you, you have to make a decision on which direction we're going. We had, we had talked about increasing the lease payment flat fee account before, but then our focus kind of shifted and we agreed that the town would start considering the purchases of apparatus. So they don't have the component anymore of having to make those purchases, and that's the rationale for keeping it flat. If we're going to start assuming the costs, the cost of those purchases, and there's going to be a lot of them coming up in the next couple of years, then why would we continue raising that fee? If they're not going to have to save money for equipment purchases.
Well, the, the other thing is, if there is a shortage in that fund, and as we're working through the year, then we can transfer money into it.
It is.
Never have, never happened in the entire history of town.
Only calls, I would say.
Never say never.
We have the ability to do that, you know.
Which, which fund are we talking about? Call wages, lease?
So this, this.
But it depends on which direction you want to go.
This came back to my rationale of the hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for snow ice, but if we had moved in that direction, we could use those funds to essentially address this need.
Mm-hmm.
And that would have been, I thought, had proven.
I think that's a great idea.
And I would say maybe some years, you know, but it wouldn't be, that, that was the rationale.
Yep.
I mean, the, the Board of Fire Engineers has made it clear that they feel, in these of my work, that had we been able to fund the flat rate properly, and as requested, we wouldn't be faced with buying the, the equipment that we're now buying. So we're kind of in that transition of catch-up. So how do, how do we get caught, how do we catch up on what we're deficient on? And then going forward, this is a year by year. You can look at this every year. And, and again, let's not lose sight of the fact that there's an elderly line item that's been established, but it's not funded, that that may change by, 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 by amount year to year.
The plan was.
That depends on the decision.
Right, that'll be the decision at that time.
Right.
No, yeah, but the, right now, I mean, the decision whether or not to buy the new trump, uh, pumper or to lease it, because it was fifty-two thousand dollars in that line item, and it was, as Tracy explained, that was a lease purchase payment for the new pumper. But now it's just a lump sum payment out of the land sale fund at four hundred and fifty thousand. So it's kind of a trade-off, and you need to decide what, what you want to do in terms of.
And that, and that's a tough decision, because before, if, if we had done this yesterday, when we could still put something.
Hence the change in the line item.
Yes, exactly.
So, you know, I mean, and it's going to be a tough decision, Frank. It is.
But that is the plan, as Bob mentioned, and that capital outlay line item is to have an amount.
Yeah.
We were considering fifty-two thousand to finance a lease payment. For, for ten years, it would have been the pumper, and then in the eleventh year, it would have been a ladder or a quint or whatever it would have been.
But you can't touch the capacity for that, and, and if you look, there's a similar line item that's in there for DPW.
DPW PD.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, that's the direction that Tracy is, is, is heading that is, is where we need to get to.
Can I just add something about regarding lease versus total payment? In Byfield, whenever we bought a fire truck or an ambulance, we always went lease purchase, because we didn't want to deplete our funds, because if we had a fire, we'd have lost another piece of equipment. We had enough money to replace that as well. So we always went lease purchase and paid as little as we could until we reached a point where the treasurer says, you know, we'll start paying it off, and we started, we pay it off at a faster rate. We'd never go the full amount, but we always started, and it always worked out very well.
There's a lot to be said for that, especially with interest rates low right now.
Yeah, municipal leases are very good.
Long-term rates are rising.
So Tracy, is that, what is the option to, do the lease purchase?
You could do.
Exclusion to.
No, no, no. You could, you can lease purch, we can't do a debt exclusion now, because we've missed the ballot deadline. But we could do a, a, a long-term lease, a ten-year lease. Payments would be around the fifty-two thousand dollar mark with a little over two percent interest. The, if you wanted to do a shorter-term lease, about double the payment, you can look at doing a combination, paying down some of it, using some reserves, free cash, land sale fund, paying two hundred thousand, financing the other two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, you can do it any way you want. We had talked about, previously, the board had talked about doing a capital exclusion override. That's not an option right now. And if you wanted to wait till the fall, that would put the purchase off for a considerable amount of time.
We're, we're kind of dealing with two things. One is, what do we do for our annual town meeting? And then what should we do going forward, taking all these things into consideration? And I think that, you know, it's, it's kind of hard right now, because we're getting close to that deadline for the warrant. We just missed the deadline for the override option, and we don't have a lot of time to, to kind of, because as you point out, all these things are interacting, right? And so, we really need kind of, you know, a long-term plan. And, you know, at the same time, as selectmen, we've been wrestling with some of these issues related to, you know, whether you can fight fires if you're over sixty-five or not, and exactly what's the legal relationship between the Board of Fire Engineers and the Board of Selectmen and so on. So that dimension is a little bit more like what we were running into with, with the clam stuff. And so we're trying to deal with that as well as the budget. And I tell you, every time I hear about fire, my head starts spinning these days, because, you know, we're trying to resolve both. So I guess the question is, given that we've got to arrive on a decision very quickly on the budget for the annual town meeting, we can't do the things we might want to do if we had time to work it through, but so it's the short term.
The Bob suggestion of increasing the lease rate from one forty to a number higher than that and taking from other accounts realistically what is in front of us.
Yeah.
We can raise it from one forty to one sixty. We can take that from another account, which we, we suggested with the road improvement account, balance the budget, give the fire companies an additional increase in their flat rate for their own use to pay their utility operating costs. Keeping at one forty doesn't give them any increase this year. As a matter of fact, it's been seventy, I've been, since I've gone on fire in this committee, it was seventy for the last five, eight years, I believe, something along those lines, to where that's seventy thousand per year, and it never went up. It went down.
I think it's actually cut from a higher amount.
I, you know, I, I don't think it's been cut. I think it never got increased, but it never got cut. If I remember, it's.
No, we talked about cutting it, and in the fall, we reinstated it. It was not reduced. I have a report from.
Here, it says it was cut. What it was, it was at, I'm sure, I'm not.
Again, that's not the point before.
Right, right.
One twenty in thirteen.
That was the actual amount expended. That wasn't the amount budgeted.
Well.
It was a higher amount budgeted.
But that's what you, that's what they received, one twenty.
There's a recommendation that I have made that we, we remove, we reduce the road improvement account by thirty thousand dollars and increase the fire lease account by an equal amount. And I, I guess that represents a fifteen thousand dollar increase to both sides.
I mean, I realize the fire department's in pretty rough shape and they need equipment. Look at our roads. We're taking money away from the roads. My good God, we need to put more money in the road improvement account, not take it from it.
Fire life safety, as we stated, is our primary concern and primary recovery source of funding. Now, we, the fire departments have been flat-lined for a number of years, and, and we now are seeing the results. Now, whether your road gets paved this year or next year, whether the fire engine breaks down on the way to your house, you, I can't, you can't put a value, equal value on those two, those two things. You know, your life safety component has to take precedence over, you know, road.
I, I go back to, if, is there a need? Okay, is there a need, okay? And if there was a need, I would hope that we would have gotten communication from the fire department saying, this item we really need to increase.
We did. We received notification from them.
A hundred and ninety thousand.
Hundred and ninety, okay.
They did the same thing the year before.
All right.
And.
This year, I received a request for additional funding. It's in your budget book that shows the requested column.
Okay.
What I'm having a hard time getting my mind around is this, as Tracy pointed out, we're sort of in this transition in terms of what we're doing at the town level, specifically in the equipment, you know, situation versus what had been done in the past. And so if I think about the bottom line of running any nonprofit, whether it be a fire company or something else, you know, you're, at the end of the day, you're trying to match your, your, your income, you know, your revenue streams to your expense. And if the town is picking up some of that potential expense that they hadn't been covering in the past, then that says that your other sources of revenue either don't need to go up as much, or maybe even could go down, and you can still balance the budget. And that's the kind of trade-off I'm having a hard time, and it's probably hard for all of us, because we're, we're sort of in this transition region. But it seems to me that, at least for me, you know, as you know, I'm a numbers guy myself. That's what I'm trying to sort of figure out. Okay, what's this trade-off here? You know, we're saving these two fire companies potentially in the long run by picking up some expenses that we hadn't picked up in the past versus, you know, the fact that other aspects of expenses are just logically going to go up no matter what they are.
But as your annual costs go up, David, what happens is, and the flat rate doesn't match that, they're now using monies that they would allocate and reserve for equipment replacement to do the operating. And, and that, that's what's been happening.
But if we're going to start buying equipment, okay, as a town, then they don't have to worry so much about having those, you know, the same level of, of reserves or however they, but what they call it in their, in terms of their internal accounting, that they would have needed in the past. And so that's where, that trade-off is the one I'm having trouble with.
Again, I'm not even talking equipment purchase. Their, their actual annual operating cost is in the two twenty-five and north for each department. Now, that's not with equipment purchases.
Yeah.
That's, that's their turning the lights on, putting fuel in the trucks, they paying, they paying their own building.
But you know as well as I, when it comes to the bottom line, they also have to factor in the equipment costs, right?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, sure, of course they do.
And if we can help cut in that dimension.
It hasn't happened yet.
But again, it's about to happen, and so, you know.
It may, it's about to happen, that's the.
You know, I, I wish we all had crystal balls in front of us, but unfortunately, we're not so lucky, so.
I know.
What we get, what we have to decide, and it's hard for me in some respects to think about, you know, we're not going to go forward with an override. We're going to have more expenses, you know, two thousand and fifteen is two thousand and fifteen. But I do have to think somehow that at least, I mean, call wages, I'd like to see increased, but if they're not using all the call wages, then that's a different case. But I, I have real trouble understanding why there's a real big argument on not wanting to maybe give thirty thousand dollars to that line item. I guess the question is, where's it going to come from?
You have to take.
Okay, and road improvement, and over here, it's, look at the condition of the roads. I mean, you know, that's, it's, it's a juggling act.
Yeah.
It's, it's traditional luthery.
Yeah.
Robert Peters, they fall.
Well, we did, the last few years, we've done pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay, and the thing that's disturbing.
Both Peters' fault suffered.
No, we have. Go back five or six years ago, when we were in a downward spiral.
Yeah.
And that's what it was. It was, we went up and down, pulling two thousand here, three thousand here. The, the things that got cut were ridiculous, okay, but we did it to survive.
Yeah, well, as, as I calculate, if we were to give the call fire wage a two percent increase, it would be about six thousand dollars. If we were to accept Bob's suggestion that we give another thirty thousand to, what, the lease or the flat rate?
Well, it's the lease.
Flat rate.
That's a total of thirty-six thousand dollars, which we'd have to find somewhere else. Oddly enough, the new constable for clam is thirty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, good. You guys are brutal.
That's why road approval looks that good. It's not a person.
Well, I say, when I hear the word fire, my head spins. When I hear the word clams, other than being in a restaurant, my head spins.
That's your call.
We could spend another hour.
Yeah, no.
And another, the other thing that we have, the other thing you have to keep in mind is, right now, we have apparently around eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of chapter ninety money and another two hundred and seventy-one allocation for FY fifteen. I mean, that's road improvement stuff, you know, and we haven't, we haven't done the road study yet to prioritize what our needs are. And that is, to me, that's absolutely mandatory. We have to have a set of priorities for fixing our roads. So, it's not just, you know, election paving, as they used to call in Pennsylvania.
It's been, it's been many years since they paved Newbury Neck Road. Never been done. They oiled it about twenty years ago, so, you know. I'm not getting anything. Larry doesn't, they, the town has never spent any money paving in front of Larry's house.
They never will.
That's right.
They never asked for it.
Tracy has instilled one discipline that has allowed the chapter money, chapter ninety money to grow. We are no longer buying equipment for IDPW out of chapter ninety money.
Right.
And the money that's accumulated is a direct result. We, we purchased these with annual operating monies around other funds. So, I mean, that's step one, Chuck, in getting, addressing the concern about putting our roads back in order.
I've been going to all the Meramec Valley planning meetings, and the last one was seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars just to do the drainage in Byfield Village. That money's already gone. The new money that's coming in is going to go to pave over what is dug up. So, it's gone. I mean, we paid sixty thousand dollars out of our chapter ninety just for the study for this thing. They want two point four million to do the whole thing right. We just don't have it, so we're going to pick away at it. We need every penny we can to put into the roads. I think we have to add a hundred thousand every year to the chapter ninety money just to start catching up on the roads that we haven't paid for years and years and years.
This shouldn't be at the expense of first response, is my point.
And I, and I do have to think, if I looked back, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the fire department budget has remained almost the same for a long.
It has.
Long, long time.
But in that same period, we gutted the police department budget.
And DPW.
And DPW.
And council on aging.
And now, we're trying to slowly play catch-up with them as well, so.
We've got the, we, the library to, where we, we can no longer cut it anymore, so.
Well, if you, if you take, and I agree with that logic, but, you know, if you continue to hold the same budget for the fire department with aging infrastructure and aging fire engines and the cost of gas and everything else going up, then we're going to have fire departments that look like the highway bond did. So, somewhere along, somewhere along the line.
Maybe Tracy's guidance could be that if we do capture year-end funds from departments that sometimes can be like a five thousand, you have a fifteen from the, you know, some, that we could earmark it to one of the priorities, which would be the flat rate. Maybe it's not time to, as Joe's saying, and to increase the line item today, but we would earmark any amounts of investment. Maybe we could transfer it. I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all for raising the fire department fund. Don't get me wrong, raising that lease payment money. I'm just not for doing it through the road improvement, okay?
Well, if it's not through the road, then anything else is pretty tight. The budget's pretty good.
Well, they're all existing accounts, that's the problem.
The only other, the only other one we can argue with is the amount of money we first had for studies, which was at thirty thousand, we reached sixty this year.
That's the other discipline that we really don't want to deviate from.
In my case, I think that we should probably disable it if that's the way that the town wants to move and try to do the transfer into the department year-end.
Just in terms of Larry's proposal, yeah, some, some accounts are over, but others, you know, and others, others are under. It's not like on average that we end up having a surplus, right?
The only account that's ever under is snow and ice. I mean, is ever over is snow and ice. We cannot deficit spend.
Everybody's operating right at the hairy edge.
Right, but there are, there are frequently balances in, in accounts. But you, I think you're limited in that year-end transfer to three percent of the total department's operating budget, so we can do that.
I think you mentioned that the call fire wage budget was not allocated completely to, to its maximum up last year.
It was not.
And then, if there's some money from that account that is residual, then we should transfer it to the, the, the lease payment. I plan that, so it goes directly to pay, so they can use that money, use that money for their own utility.
With a vote of the Board of Selectmen and a vote of the Finance Committee at year-end, you can make that transfer.
You know, Larry, that goes back many years ago, when we would typically do that, okay? And, and one big thing is, if we had an easy winter on snow, okay? We would take that money in the spring and transfer it over for working on roads. That was an automatic thing every year.
When, when, when did that occur recently?
Twenty, twenty-five years. No, not recently.
No.
I mean, that was a very common practice, and would be doing the same sort of thing, going from one department in the, in the fire budget, you know, one item in the fire budget, to another, okay? And in this case, by saving money in one item, they'd be rewarding it, they'd be rewarded for getting it another thing, for the same.
It would make it cleaner anyway, and I think that with the emotions of the roads and taking in mind the tightness of the budget, we should move forward like we did here forever. But I think that if there's some sense, we could do that transfer appropriately when the time is right, then they get, they would get it in a time that they could probably use it to pay some of their outstanding.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
I respectfully disagree with my, my good friend Larry. He gave a recommendation from the liaison of the fire department before you take action, I think, go action. To do it, the last, the budget transfer of, in that tenth period, that's not going to be annual. That's going to be based on the funds available one time. That's how we get into trouble with the fire departments. Why we're buying call up here, why we're faced with a fire track. It's either fund them correctly or start buying all their stuff. That's, that's weird. We're in the transition now. What's before you as a recommendation is, do you reduce the road improvement account by thirty thousand dollars or some other account by thirty thousand dollars and increase the leasehold, the lease fund account for the fire department? That, that's always before you.
Yeah, but I guess what bothers me is that if we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul or whatever, we don't have an advocate for the roadside or whatever other part of the budget you'd like to take that money from. And so, I find, you know, we don't have time to have a formal debate on this kind of stuff. So, you know, you know, it's, it's kind of like, we have two options, right? Do something along the lines of what you propose or do nothing.
Yeah, no, exactly. Is this why you hate such people?
I know it. Jesus. Yeah.
We can, we can, one, one thing, though, let's, let's remember, Larry did modify Bob's request somewhat.
Larry is not the liaison. Larry is a dear friend.
But I think, let, let's, let's, let's look at, let's look at thirty, let's look at thirty or twenty, but there should be something.
You have a right to injure, but I think the void can take whatever action they need.
Wages for the weekend funding.
That's what I was going to ask. What would it cost to do weekend time? Because that seems to be the most important thing you want, isn't it?
That was.
I think so.
A little bit of both, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, two guys, both sides.
Four guys, two days. It's how, forty-four thousand?
That was the increase in the call wages was to fund two additional man, men at each station, seventy, thirty-eight hours shift.
Forty-four thousand, why don't we?
No, forty-four?
I, it was in the.
It sounds.
Yeah, it was in the budget.
But it's four people.
Forty-four, seven, one, eight is what it's.
Forty-four.
Right, and that was. And that was exactly what the chief of the fire engineers allocated that, that was, that was their reaction.
That's really important.
But I would recommend, again, that you not put it in the call wage account. You put it in the fire protection wages. That's the positions account. Call is for when they go out on call for their fifteen dollars an hour. If you're going to create a position, whether it's part-time or full-time, it should go in that wage line item.
Just a clarification, do you think that there'll be no benefits associated with these two hundred individuals or would they be?
It would depend on what the engineers would recommend. If they're twenty hours a week or more, then it would be benefits. Yep.
We're talking.
Mike, I can ask a question.
Yeah.
When did, what comes out of fire protection wages?
All of the positions, the, the full-timers, the four full-timers. You've got four full-timers currently.
All right.
And if you wanted to fill a weekend, or create a new position, a weekend coverage position, that would come out of that.
All right. We, I want, while we discuss this, I don't think we should start another position. I think they should backfill it with call people. We don't want to create another person that we have to pay insurance to.
That's fine.
All these other, all these other things. And we don't need to create another full-time position.
Understood.
When you could put it in call wages, and they can put them in wherever they want them, where the, where the voids are.
The, the position goes in the, the fire protection wage account. They can fill it with call firefighters, you know, an eight-hour shift here and eight-hour shift there. But it's a weekend coverage. It's a new position we're creating. It doesn't have to be full-time or part-time. It can, call firemen can be used to fill it. But there would be a job description and it would be rated.
I'm trying to stay away from that.
We, I don't think you say.
Don't want another position.
It's not a position. It's not a benefits-eligible position.
We don't want another job description. Job description is already there for firefighter. Don't call it, don't call it.
It's not fighting fires, though.
Don't call it call wages, call it part-time wages.
I think what Mike's saying, and I think because he understands a little bit more on, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of times, guys are paid to be on call.
Right.
They have to be within, I don't know how many, whatever, but they don't have to be right in the fire station.
He's going to be right in the fire station.
All right, the one that's on, and, but, and do, but I mean, I think I can remember Nathan, oh, he's in the fire station, and there's another one that's.
They may do that, but the one, all weekends and holidays, usually, they're in the station.
Okay.
So, we're already paying people to be on call now?
I think you are.
I don't know what you meant by that.
That'd be a question for the Board of Fire Engineers.
Okay.
I mean, I think we, we should, we shouldn't second-guess the request of the Board of Fire Engineers. We should determine whether we have funding.
No, I don't, I'm mixed up. What did you mean by that, Tracy?
You said we're paying people to be on call in the fire department?
No, I'm saying if you could pay people to be on call in the fire department.
Okay, if that's what we want to do, again, it should go in the fire protection wage account.
Why shouldn't it? In other words, what I wanted to have clarification from Mike, if you are going to have someone be on weekends,
Yep.
and that's what you picked me up on and it was wrong, do you have to pay them to be exactly in the station? No, I'm asking Mike, because I think they can be, can't, if you, they, if, can't they be on call from, like, home or something?
They could be, but I don't think.
They spent, no?
That's not what they wanted.
Trying.
No.
I mean, it's, it's manpower.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
Bob, there's a difference from being in the station or being home that weekend.
Yeah.
But I think every call fireman is a call.
But it sounds like it's the same reason why we pay full-time people, right? Is that you want to have somebody there, so if a fire happens, somebody can at least drive the truck to the fire or whatever, while the other guys are trying to get together.
Exactly.
They call the guys into the station, and they stay all night. They get paid fifteen dollars an hour, just like there's a fire.
Okay.
It comes out of call wages. The ones that are on duty on the weekends, they're going to be working in the station. They're going to be at the station.
How many hours they work?
Well, depends on what the chief wants.
No, it'd be an eight-hour, just like we have eight-hour shifts.
The, the other thing is, I think that Gene's, you know, like, he was making some figures and stuff like that. And I think the thing to remember is, these weekend positions would be sixteen hours a weekend, okay?
Right.
And that does not go for creating a position with benefits. That's right, that's right. I don't want to do it.
Right.
But I counted the same way. She wants to put it in the other account.
Well, if someone has some experience in accounting, I completely understand.
It's just the accounting system.
Yeah.
Same time firefighters, you pay the.
This is how, you know, when you do accounting.
It's just accounting. There's, there's going to be the same people getting the same money, but it's an accounting thing.
That, that, but we're saying sixteen hours a week, but what about, it's a twenty-four-seven operation, isn't it?
No, no.
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 It's forty hours a week right now, we have coverage.
I think it's much more justified when putting it in the wage category, because you could pretend that it's actual identified wages to be paid for coverage. It's not the call wage, but it, it's actually a sign hours budget. And I think it's, and it should go up proportionally as offensive as being, that's where it should be. I agree that it should, including a call fire wage budget, kind of distracts the back of what exactly your point.
Are they going to be there or not, or whatever, yeah?
The point was, I thought call fires are going down, so our call fire activity should go down proportionally, which is what your point was. And you don't put up the argument, well, it's, what do you mean, we don't have that many fires, but we're having our call wage budget go up substantially. No, these are assigned hours to be filled by call firemen.
Right.
But it would be in the budget to be at the same level as the permanent salary level.
But Larry, that, that'll give you two categories now. The call, the guys that are on call, that are part-time call men, that are filling in on the weekends, they're going to pay, be paid out of a different fund than the ones that are called in during a storm and everything else. I mean.
If there's a fire on Saturday or Sunday, they would.
It's confusing issue.
No, I don't think you would. It, it just, it is, I think, that's, I think we should research it. It should be, certainly should be researched.
I mean, see, I, I, this is the first time I'm hearing about the new, you know, now we're going to start changing the operational procedure of the fire department.
This has been, we've been, since I've been here, and I, I think it was started prior to when I came on, that you had these various line items. I didn't create these.
Those line items are the same, but that other one is for full-time, your, your full-time guys.
Right, right, right.
Not just right. It's not for, when you bring somebody in to backfill or to cover holidays or weekends, they're always paid on the call wages.
But this is some.
That was a major change. And the fire chief of the Board of Fire Engineers probably don't even know it.
Well, you know, the police department has reserve officers, but they use all the time to fill in the gaps. And also to use to dispatch and to do administrative stuff downstairs. The whole point is, you're not paying somebody full-time with full benefits to do that. You have reserve officers, only eleven full-time people for twenty-four-seven coverage. It's a whole other discussion.
All right.
In the case, the wages for reserve officers doesn't, because it's not a separate account called call officers, it's all in the wage and salary account.
If you're going to go along with that mindset, then eliminate call wages and put it all under fire protection wage.
No.
Mike, this is really, it has nothing to do with the actual running of the fire companies. It has to do with how we have to keep track of it in modern accounting systems. And, you know, one of the things that I really congratulate Tracy on is that she's taken this kicking and screaming from about the nineteenth century up to a, a, a modern accounting standard.
The only ones that are going to know are the people when they fill out the, the code for working weekends.
I mean, I think what they want to make sure of this is that they can use the call firemen and spread the hours around so that.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely. This doesn't prohibit that, yeah.
So, I, I think maybe that's the clarification. The wage account isn't restricted to permanent wage.
No.
And I, I don't want to hear the term another position, because we can't afford another position.
Hey, we're asking to spend more money, and I don't care what you call it. At the end of the day, if the guys get paid when they deserve it, they're going to be happy, right?
Forty-four thousand is more than.
Yeah.
Well, you've got holidays too.
Well, you have holiday coverage if it falls during the week.
Now, during the week, Mike, you know better. During the week, if we get a holiday in the middle of the week, okay, those guys have a holiday. They get the same days off that town hog gets off. Right. So, you, they have to put guys in there to cover that shift for that day.
I'd rather really shift the conversation back to, do we want to do it and how much?
And where are we going to?
Yeah.
Where are we going to offset it, to keep our balanced budget?
I, I, Bob says that the fire engineers and the chief wants to do it, and it makes sense, you know, to, so that we have seven days a week coverage.
I mean, again, I think the recommendation is, they've asked for a dollar amount.
Yeah.
What, what action do you want to take? Why don't we address the lease purchase? They've asked for the one ninety. There's been a proposal. What, what action do you want to take? Why don't we address the least for, they've asked for the one ninety. There's been a proposal we increase it by thirty. Why don't we address that, Joe, and then move on to this one?
But they're very tightly coupled, because, you know, at the end of the day, we need to know the bottom line for fire protections and then we have to figure out where it's coming from and, you know.
About generating the money that we spend.
What, what we're discussing right now can happen at town meeting floor by a, a single motion.
But I, I'm also, we're on the same wavelength. I can also still do math in my head and I was coming to the same conclusion. Wait, forty-four, this sounds like too much if all is, is to. Get the, the eight-hour coverage for, for two weekend days per week. It's.
And holidays.
Well, they're already doing, yeah. That's already taken care of.
They're covered.
You said that they bring call firemen on holidays to cover those.
Yeah, but she calls them different now.
No, wait.
It's gonna be the same people.
She!
We have to add those hours to the.
No.
It's not necessarily a full day. You could have a guy work a Saturday and a guy work a Sunday this way.
You can take a full-time position and split it between two people. You know, we've done that before.
You could take a day and have two call firefighters, one take the morning, one take the afternoon.
No, that's not the way it works. They have two.
Well, you, you could do that.
They have two guys on. You can't, because especially those days when, say, people are on vacation, okay? You need two people in the station to get that truck out of there into the fire quick.
I know, you're gonna have two people there.
Where you gonna go?
They're gonna be assigned to work a certain shift.
Yeah, but you're only putting one guy in the morning and one guy in the afternoon.
No, I didn't say that. I said, what, the guy that's working all day, if he says, I only want to work the morning, you want to take the afternoon.
So is the forty-four gonna come from you or do you?
There's gonna be two hours here a day and they're both gonna work eight hours.
What happens if two guys wanna split?
So that means.
Okay, I'm just saying.
There has to be two.
That was the piece, yeah.
That's where it comes up for that.
Yep, okay. Yeah, now it makes sense.
It doesn't make, don't even complicate it with the saying that. We need the hours for the people that are covering those, that, you know, shift.
I mean, like.
Well, how about you go from zero to one instead of going from zero to two?
Well, I think the point was that they feel they need.
I think you need two people.
Well, when you put the call out, people respond now.
But the point of having somebody essentially during prime time in the station is that they feel that they need two people to get one or more trucks to the fire.
I, I understand that, but right now we have zero.
I know.
But if we increase it one day there, even if we did Saturday or Sunday as a stop.
You have two people every day, five days a week.
Correct.
We want the same coverage for Saturdays, Sundays and fifteen holidays for two stations.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're not, it's gonna be, it's gonna be invisible.
That's what we're doing.
There'll be two people there and the only difference is gonna be the account that the money comes out of.
Right.
The way I see it, unless I've completely missed it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ian. And whatever Tracy wants to call it, let her call it, whatever it is, because that, we hired her to do that. That's her job.
Guys are gonna get paid either way and they're gonna be happy, so.
Yeah, they won't know where they're gonna be paid.
You know, Chuck, you're right, but you know what? The people that are running the department don't know of this change. And they're making out budgets and things like that and they don't know that. I just heard it here. I was in the fire department, I was in the, with the fire days for twenty-some odd years.
Bob said this was a request from the chief.
Yep.
Doug.
Well, you, you had budget requests, which was, is in our budget book, which by the way is some of the finest work I've ever seen in the town of Newburgh.
Thank you.
Clarity is just quite amazing. Probably gives us too much clarity to ask those questions.
A little more vague next year.
Alright, so what do we want to do? You want to leave it the way it is, Mike?
Whatever you want.
We want the weekend.
I want, I want the coverage.
We've got three options now. Do nothing, do essentially what the fire engineers requested, and then this idea, well, maybe we, we stage it and so we give them.
Step on one day a weekend.
Yeah, one day as opposed to both days and, and then they can decide which day it is based on their experience with the probability of a fire happening and so on, so.
Coming from where?
Then when it comes to finding where to take that money, it, it gets a little less painful if we're going for, for twenty-twenty-two as opposed to forty-four. So it gives us a little more flexibility on the other half of the equation, which we haven't had really much. So I, I'm kind of, I was more on the do-nothing side, but still on the fence. But I'm getting kind of comfortable with this. Okay, let's see if we can come up with enough money to give them one day of coverage on the weekend.
So twenty-two thousand from the road improvement program?
Does the increase originally, call wages, or equal five? Let's reduce that by fifty percent, again, as a, as a starting point. I mean, because anything we do here is a step in the right direction.
But can I, I'm gonna complicate this.
No, no, don't please.
Please don't, please.
Chuck, be quiet. The only thing is, and I gotta ask Mike, because he's the one that knows the most of, of us here about the fire department. If we're talking about twenty-two thousand dollars and that twenty-two grand as opposed to forty-four would put two people on for one day. And we're doing this with the real recognition of the fact that we want those people there, and I gotta ask you this. Because you're gonna be the guy that knows more than I do. Would it be better to ask for twenty-two grand, well, pick in one day, a Saturday or Sunday, which is kind of, I don't know, Russian let to me? Or, I gotta ask a question. Does it help to have one person in the station to get things going?
For both days.
For both days? Because can they get the fire engine ready, the doors up and, till the guys, does it accelerate call response?
Okay.
And I'll go with whatever you say.
In my opinion, okay, because you're in the summer, people are away on vacation that normally would be home. You've got a beach down here that generates a lot of activity, a lot of calls, alright? You need the same two people that you have for the hours you have during the day every five days a week. You need two people on Saturday and you need two people on Sunday. And you need two people in each station the same way, every holiday. Count the holidays, just like the Saturday and Sunday. So you would need two, two at fire field and two in the station.
But again, we're already covering the, the holidays during the week, so.
And that's, that's important, because.
But Mike, if, if, if you had to make a decision between one person, both weekend days versus two people and one of them, what would you choose? Because it's the same cost to the town.
Alright.
The engineers.
I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do it that way.
Well, you know, you know.
Yeah, we could do that, right?
Yeah, the engineers.
We give them the, the twenty-two or whatever and then let.
Providing the funding level we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, and let, yeah, that makes sense.
Let me ask you a question. If we're down the, just gonna hit me one person each day, then I would talk to the Board of Fire Engineers and let them pick the time that they think is gonna be best.
Definitely.
It could be Sunday and it could be Saturday, depending on their, when their activity is.
Yep.
It's a good, in other words, we're going in the right direction.
Yep.
And we're not there yet.
Sounds good.
And I, and I think, I think what we're talking about is the money and let the chief figure out where he wants his manpower, right?
Yeah.
And the board.
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
And, and that's their function to, to make.
And sometimes. We shouldn't be telling the chief where to put his manpower at all.
We should be providing funding that we can, we can, just we can find.
Yep.
And, and then let them use it according to what their job is.
Alright.
Okay. So again, I'm trying to, okay, so for the coverage on the weekends. I can be comfortable, you know, with the sort of go halfway this year and try to get the whole way next year.
Okay.
And then, but then what about the rest? We keep everything else level funded for this year while we work out the big picture?
Yep.
And so then the only thing we have to do next would be figure out, okay, where does that twenty-two K come from?
Come from.
Are you doing two percent increases and those other things?
Well, the reason we're doing that is because they're getting raises, okay, and all the other people. And if, if we're gonna give raises to them, then we should do that, but I don't.
The full timers are getting raises.
The full timers are, but the.
If we want to change the call rate.
Yeah.
Then, I mean, which I would recommend that we do, but we need to gather the data, present it to the personnel board and, and have them vote and make a recommendation to the board.
I, I think that it's way overdue, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and again, this is another conversation that, you know, at the end of the day, we have to decide what goes on the warrant, but obviously we want input from the, the Board of Fire Engineers and so forth as we go through that process, so.
Okay, we've been on this for an hour and five minutes right now, this one particular topic we haven't moved. Somebody make a motion, let's get on here, okay?
I'm gonna move that we will increase, what's the right category now?
Fire protection wages.
By twenty-two thousand dollars.
And decrease.
And then, what are we gonna decrease? That's gotta be the other half. And so, even though I drive down a road that's of a, a patchwork. Patches and potholes and I've seen the damage potholes can do to a car. I would be willing to consider, you know, I'll make this the second half of the motion that we take it out of the, and again, I can't remember the exact.
Road improvement program.
Yeah, program.
Yep.
Alright. So are we happy with that?
We have a motion.
You have a motion.
I made the motion, but someone needs to second it.
Alright. Do you believe enough in it to second it? Well, I mean, I'll, I'll second it, because it's better than nothing.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
I'll vote for it.
No, that's right. We're heading in the right direction. Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright.
What? Chuck, what are you doing? Do you, alright, any names?
I'm reluctantly voting yes, okay, because I want to see the increase in that, but I don't want to see it come from the road improvement program, okay? I'm gonna say it again.
Find someplace else.
Okay, too late, we already voted.
Do you have a recommendation still pending on the flat rate? Are you gonna take any action on that?
I, I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I don't think we can.
I thi- I think that we're trying to do too much too quick and it's a transition thing. That's my feeling. I don't, what do you feel, Jeff?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with twenty grand on, on, on the lease payments, because that would have been kind of where we were before, but, I mean, I'm open for what people want to do too.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion for that and you guys can turn it down. We, we, you, you say by putting twenty grand in, it puts us where we were before.
So where's it coming from?
I mean, I'll take, I'll take it out of roads. I don't have a problem with that. Well, you live on a state road.
Right?
I'll take it out of roads.
No.
No, actually.
No, that was.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
I had two edges, actually.
Now you want to take twenty thousand dollars out of roads?
Um, we took, what, twenty-two out of it?
Mm-hmm.
Then take another, uh. Take, take ten out for at least moving in the right direction on lease payments, which have been static for as long as I can remember. And I'll make that as a motion and you guys can turn it down.
Okay.
Didn't we increase them last year?
Oh, we did?
We increased it ten, but we cut it.
Yep.
I, I have a spreadsheet. We have not restored flat rate to its original funding.
We have not restored it to its original funding. We increased it last year.
Right.
Just so we're clear that we have the facts.
On lease payments, Tracy?
Yes.
What was it before?
We increased it ten grand.
Yeah, it went from sixty to seventy. It, it was at ninety.
Each side.
That's right.
Wow.
Okay, and it's been on during all of our challenging times.
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, well, I, I, say it again, Jeff, what, I, I'm not sure.
My motion was to increase the lease payments by ten thousand dollars to one hundred and fifty thousand and to take it from roads.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. All opposed?
Nay.
So that's thirty-two thousand.
Mate, we don't have a, we don't have a full vote yet. Okay.
Yes, I'll vote yes on it.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, not happy. I'm, I'm happy that the fire department's getting the money. I'm just not happy where it's coming from, okay? I'm gonna keep saying it and keep saying it and keep saying it.
Yes.
Getting some money. Alright, this didn't take long.
Alright, greenhead control expenses. We've been notified by the Essex County.
Mosquito.
Mosquito control. Northern, Essex County mosquito control.
It has a new name.
It does.
Northeast mosquito.
Thank you, Kathy. Northeast mosquito control project that the, the fee for providing what they have historically provided us for greenhead traps will be increasing fifteen hundred dollars. Triton Regional Operating Assessment. The increase based on the two-step method this year is four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Debt service is decreasing by eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Whittier Regional is up ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Why is that up so much?
Uh, basically.
Percentage wise, that's a huge increase.
Yeah, our, our number of students have been increasing significantly. This year, we are up five students and our minimum contribution to Whittier went up sixty-eight thousand this year.
So it's both.
Both. It's both, both steps of the two-step method, the minimum contribution and the number.
And what was our previous contribution per student?
Uh, I do not know per student. I'd have to go back and calculate that.
For how many students did we have before? I'm just trying to, it's kind of a shock to see that bigger.
Two, two years ago, it was seven.
I think we, yeah, I mean, it doubled last year.
And it's been nineteen.
And now it's up to nineteen.
So we're really, very significant change in enrollment, yeah.
Trend may continue.
Especially until the economy starts booming again.
Yeah, plus the increase is gonna last at least three, four years.
Right. And our Essex North Shore assessment is going up a little over thirteen thousand. We have two additional students this year for that. GPW salary and wages reflective of the two percent. They're also under, working under a collective bargaining agreement now. Street lighting, someone asked if that was turning lights back on. It is not. It is just reflective of what we are currently paying. Let's see. Council on Aging Wages, we talked about that a little bit. That's reinstating one of the positions that had been previously lost. Some of the funding to come from the decrease in the assessors office. Veterans Assessment and the veterans benefits, they are increasing this year by a little over thirteen thousand. We did two things. We joined the, the veterans district.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And we only paid a portion of that last year. We weren't in it for the full year. And we also have had a number of new veterans. That's a line item. The, the service benefits that fluctuates year by year, that's just based on the, the current veterans that we are providing service for. People move in and out of the district, so that is one of those line items, along with call fire wages that, you know, are definitely eligible for reserve fund transfers.
But also, I mean, given the history of the military and the fact that their budgets are getting cut and so forth, that's likely to continue to increase, I would imagine.
I would expect it would, mm-hmm. Library expenses, that's increases to books and periodicals, the three thousand dollars. Long-term debt is declining significantly as well as the interest over five hundred, well, actually over close to six hundred thousand. Our Essex Regional Retirement Assessment.
On that line, a lot of that, we saw, a lot of that debt exclusion, so we can't, it doesn't help us.
Right.
On the.
It doesn't provide for levy capacity.
Right.
Well, not, not significantly in this one, because we did have some SBA reimbursements that we were receiving, so there is some, but it's, it's not a significant amount. Our Essex Regional Retirement Assessment is up.
Wow.
Twenty-three thousand dollars for a little over, well, I'm across five percent.
Also, just, so I'm correct, the road improvement program, just looking back up, it's been reduced to forty-eight thousand, is that right? Thirty-two down for, for the shift in five.
Oh, based on what we did tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thirty-two thousand reduction, yes, yep. Let's see, what have we got left? Health insurance, our preliminary rate, premium increase is at nine point eight percent. We are one of the communities that received the highest increases that Meyer gave this year. So I am currently negotiating with them to see if we can, if they are, are willing or able to provide us any kind of rate relief.
Is that based on history?
Experience is a factor.
Yeah.
Sixty grand. Sixty grand.
So it's really just the premiums are going up, but we're not, it's not like we've had a lot of new employees who are eligible or something like that. It's just.
And we, actually, that's a good point to note, David. If we had any benefits-eligible employees come on, we would have to adjust that line item, because we don't have, a lot of times you would have a factor where you'd have plus one in case.
That poor clamwort.
Right, right. Same thing for the dental. The Article Four is the article that we've, again, establishing that discipline, that we're going to make a contribution every year to the Stabilization Fund. It's the first article that's not just symbolic. It's a priority. The Capital Planning Committee has put together the inventory. This eventually, the goal is, the Stabilization Fund would fund all of your capital asset replacements. We're not there yet because of all of the years of deferred maintenance and deferred funding, I guess.
I just wonder, like, for that type of item, you know, under the rationale, would it make sense to add, sort of, the recommended percentage of total budget, sort of things?
You know, we don't, we don't really do a recommended percent of budget. For stabilization, ideally, when we put together our asset replacement schedule, say, over a twenty-year period, you would wanna see the amount in the fund that would cover the current year's planned expenditures. So it's, we don't tie that as closely to a percentage of operating budget as we would, say, a free cash.
But then, would it make sense in that line, saying, okay, this is, you say what, kind of what we wanna use it for, but.
Sure.
Here's our target, you know, and this is a step towards the target.
It's, you wanna throw that number out, Bob? Four point.
We always have a two and a half million dollar gap on some capital improvement.
Right.
Tracy, but just a clarification. Are we talking, you wanna go in a direction where that these are funded through the stabilization funds? That would be money in surplus of what our minimum reserves would be, not using our reserves of either, 'cause that would seem.
That would be, I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, if we follow DOI recommendations and build a stabilization fund with a five percent of our annual budget reserve, or eight hundred grand, any money that we added in after that, 'cause that's your emergency money to cut the stone, right?
That's free cash.
No, no, stabilization is five percent. Free cash is three percent.
No. Stabilization, there's no recommendation on it.
There most certainly is. Is a five percent recommendation ideal, or?
Reserves.
No, no, for the stabilization account, three percent for free cash. And that's what the bond rating companies look at, probably.
It fluctu-, you can have five to fifteen percent.
That's the minimum. Both of those are minimums.
But those are minimums. Those are floors, not ceilings.
My question is, is.
Ideally, you'd wanna have that floor.
Yeah, either way.
Yeah, when, where.
You know, it's kinda like.
Very far away from.
Test of all possible worlds, what's our target? And we're trying to sneak up on it as the budget allows, and.
I think we're probably gonna be quite a few years, again, looking at the planned replacements that Capital Planning Committee has identified, we're probably quite a ways away from reaching that floor.
So in other words, you're saying it might be nice to do it a little bit this year, because it might not get done?
Well, you know, that, ideally, that fifty thousand will be a much higher amount as levy capacity is gained.
But still, I mean, it's, how do we know where, in terms of where we'd like to be?
This year.
But I'm saying, again, you know, if we could get back to where we'd like to be as opposed to where we are today.
Yeah.
Is three hundred and ninety-one thousand, you know, a good number or a bad number? Well, obviously, it's a bad number. That's the kind of message I'm trying to think, 'cause someone looks at that, most people don't even have a clue, and myself included sometimes, I get confused between stabilization and reserves and free cash. But it's like, that looks like a really big number, right? I mean, for your average homeowner. But probably our average assessed value in town's about that size. So it looks like a really big number, but when you see it in the broader context, in fact, it's a fairly small number.
Well, assuming, like, just make a broad assumption, that all requests that came in were funded as presented, our stabilization balance at the end of town meeting would be somewhere around a hundred and three thousand, if everything were fi-, I mean, I'm not suggesting that you do that, but that's only those requests that have been, you know, prioritized, identified, and are on this current warrant, not all of which have been approved.
I'm just saying, something like that to create some context for people.
Sure.
You know, and that would be a good way of looking at it, that we would all but wipe it out if we had funded all the things that we think we need to do.
Yep.
I mean, David, we're gonna be funding our stone night stuff as about a free cash.
Right.
We never had free cash before. That would've come out of stabilization.
Right.
And again, that's where having that reserve at a minimum, 'cause that could be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that deficit.
'Cause I, I mean, another way of handling this also would be in the presentation that we've had in recent years. And I really think we'd be much better off to drop some of those big tables of numbers and stuff, because people tend to glaze over and focus on some of these key items that.
I think we're gonna work on revising it this year.
So people really get the, you know, here's all this stuff, but really, this is what we've really gotta worry about, looking forward in time.
That's a good point.
And also this message that we took a huge hit 'cause of the Great Recession, and we're slowly digging our way out, but it's a very slow process, given the constraints we have with Prop Two and a Half and so forth.
Now, do we have to make a motion to include this?
If you, if you would actually take a vote on each of the articles, so I can record it.
Motion to accept is presented.
Article Four?
Article Four.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article Five.
Okay, that's the twenty-five thousand dollar reminder, if you will, to town meeting that we have this other post-employment benefit liability looming large. It is in excess of three million, three point seven million dollars. So that's, each year, we've been committing at least twenty-five thousand. Obviously, that needs to increase to get to full funding, but that's where it is.
That's the kind of thing that people can figure out, geez, if we really got this liability, and we're already throwing in a few K a year.
It's a reminder that it's out there. People are aware of it.
Motion to accept, Article Five. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Six.
Article Six is nine thousand dollars to purchase portable radar units to be available to deploy to specific neighborhoods as needed. This is a nine thousand dollar purchase requested by the Police Department.
Can we make a motion? Will we approve it or put it in?
Second motion.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
A nice example of spending money to make money.
You know, the residents want it, like, if I feel center in Hanover Street especially. They've wanted it for years.
They work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Article Seven.
You didn't vote.
Oh.
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay. Article Seven is the appropriation of the Chapter Ninety funds from the Commonwealth of Mass in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine thirty-one.
Motion?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Eight is for the purchase of a wheeled excavator. Purchase price is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is an appropriation from the Stabilization Fund, and we'll require a two-thirds vote, and I should've mentioned that on the appropriation into the Stabilization Fund. That also requires the two-thirds vote.
Motion?
I make a motion. We do it together. I think they have a question before we vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, second.
Second, okay.
Okay, I just, my question is, why would we buy a wheeled excavator over a truck excavator?
On the recommend.
Yeah, again, Capital Planning, they said that the wheel excavator is much more stable, stable to get into different areas of town where we have, you know, we have soft soils, and it's gonna be used a lot of the foot, as Bob explained, it's gonna be an articulated mower deck that can reach over the sides of the road, cut the road better, so I think where a truck is gonna chew up the road.
Is this an excavator, wheel, or a backhoe?
It's a rubber tied excavator.
Okay, all right.
So you get three hundred and sixty degree radius. One of the big benefits is, they currently clean a lot of soils by hand.
Yep.
They have a mower deck after that. This will be gonna be a machine which is more efficient service.
I just have one other question, and it has to do with our contract with Mellow for the transfer station. So I've never quite understood, or haven't read, I guess, the details of the contract. So what are we supposed to supply in terms of equipment and?
The backhoe.
So, I mean, we've already bought the other, the compacters and that kind of stuff, right? So basically, major equipment is kind of the town's responsibility, maintaining it and running the transfer station.
No, they're responsible for maintaining it. We just provide it.
That's what I was gonna say. They're supposed to maintain it.
Right. And the plan would be to trade in the backhoe that is there? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Article Nine is a request for fifteen thousand, four ninety-five to purchase an asphalt roller. This recommendation, the Capital Planning Committee has asked, be postponed and reviewed for action in a subsequent year.
Why?
In talking to Tim London, the current roller, who's operational, but with all of the other demands of a high priority. It's not that it's not needed, and it's scheduled for replacement. It's just with the amount of higher prioritized expenditures, that was the rationale.
All right.
Can we put it up to, like, possibly the fall town meeting?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So you.
Let's see, let's see if we've got any money or anything. Good idea.
So you'd wanna make a motion to remove this article?
Yeah. Article Nine, motion to remove.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article Ten is the purchase of the, or purchase or lease purchase of the pump for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Initially, again, we had talked about a capital outlay line item. We don't have the levy capacity, so now we're, we have to decide whether you want to expend funds from the sale of land account, if you wanna utilize funds from free cash, a combination, if you wanna do a short-term versus a long-term lease and pay those costs from one of our available reserves with the intention of, hopefully, next year, adding the capital outlay and funding it through the operating budget.
I like the model that Mike said, go into a lease, and then when we, like, get caught up, pay it off. You know, and we should really be vigilant and look at that.
I'll make a final motion, if you want. I make a motion that we fund the four hundred and fifty thousand through a long-term lease, but with the, so that we can pay it off earlier if we have the money.
Okay.
And there's no penalties for that type of municipal?
You can structure it that way.
Okay, that makes sense?
I think so, 'cause as I said, you know, we've sold the family jewels, and we wanna make the best use of them as we possibly can. And so I'm very supportive of.
I'll second the lease option as opposed to the.
Would you still leave it, though, under the land sale fund? And then, Tracy, if you increase the appropriation next year, you just wouldn't draw it down on the lease or the outland count, would pay it rather than?
Would pay it.
So that whatever the balance was in that land sale appropriation would remain.
Correct.
Why is it coming from the land sale? Why doesn't it come?
Or it can come from free cash or stabilization.
Right, stabilization. That's what that's for. That's the savings account?
Well, at four fifty, there wasn't enough money in the stabilization.
I mean, under your land fund, I mean, it's restricted to capital improvement assets.
Yeah.
Where your free cash gives you the flexibility to do pretty much anything. And you have the funds there. If you take, do the lease purchase, I would suggest we consider doing it, appropriating it from the land sale fund. But next year, the goal is to get these on an outlay account, which then would come out of the annual operating budget. Whatever was left would just stay in.
And I got, the estimate for the lease is fifty-plus K.
Fifty-two thousand for the long-term lease that Mike suggested. Yep.
Jane, you?
This is kind of an outside-the-box question. Could we, 'cause this was something that's strongly considered drawing for a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Could we go for the debt exclusion to pay off the remainder of?
Yeah.
Sure. In the fall.
Yeah, I like that idea.
That's interesting.
Start out, because you wanna get it in motion, 'cause they need it.
Yeah.
Do a hundred thousand dollars as the down payment funded. And then do a debt exclusion.
Sign up for the lease, and then if we get the debt exclusion, we'll pay it off, right?
I mean, that's a thought.
Yeah, I like that.
You ready for the question?
Yeah.
It clearly qualifies, I think.
And can we put the money back in the land sales account when we?
No.
I'm against the debt exclusion. I think it should be, if it has to go that way, they go for an override.
That is an override.
That is an override.
But not a debt, but not a debt exclusion, because that truck has, it's gonna require maintenance and testing and expenses for that, so.
We can make that decision.
We increase the expense.
Then add the ten thousand dollars.
We increase the maintenance line item by the ten thousand for that purpose, so. So that would be something you would want for consideration in the fall?
Yes.
Okay.
So the first payment, we cut out of the land sale fund?
Mm-hmm.
And then we figure out how to pay off the rest of it?
Well, essentially, yeah, but I mean, once we start with that, unless we get funding from someplace else, that'll be, we'll fall back to that.
If it doesn't go.
So you approve it for the four, four fifty?
No, you approve it for the lease payment amount.
Yeah. I'm against that, because.
The fifty-two thousand, okay.
Hundred and fifty-two right out of it?
No, fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, the only other question, Tracy, that I would have, is, and it probably doesn't, isn't relevant, but suppose you start to plead the land sales to a point, you're never gonna go below fifty-two thousand a year. But suppose you, where does it go after that? Where do we take it when the land sale money is no longer there? And we still have a.
Well, we gotta be.
Seven years of fifteen-year lease.
If it's gonna come out of land sales, we gotta make sure we leave enough in the account so that we can do, pay it off.
So that's the case, that still really ties up the land sale.
I can set up an encumbrance on the, in the general ledger, or I can have the accountant do that, understanding that of the over nine hundred thousand dollars that we have in the account, four hundred and fifty thousand is committed until otherwise noted.
One of these alternative approaches where it comes along.
That being said, I would make the motion that in Article Ten.
That the fire truck is leased from the land sale account.
No, I think alls we have to do is just change that purchase slash lease to just lease, right?
What is it? Lease buy, or lease buy, what are we doing?
To lease.
We already have a motion on the floor by.
Yeah, that's right.
Mike, to fund a long-term lease from the land sale.
Good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And pay off earlier if monies are available and seconded by Walker, so.
Good. Good motion? Good motion. Okay. Nice call, Mike. Second?
I seconded already. You already seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good.
Shoot.
Okay.
But the four fifty was an outside estimate.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Right, maybe less than that, so we don't know until it's actually expected.
But also, with the lease number, it would be, again, it would be a not to exceed, right?
Correct. Article Eleven is the continuation of our commitment to outfit the firefighters with new structural firefighting gear in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, questions? I got one question. Is this gonna be, is this like the final thing, 'cause we broke in half?
There's one more.
There's one more. Okay, that's the only question I have now. All right, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Article Twelve, we do this transfer annually. They collect fees from businesses that have the fire alarm boxes, fire alarm maintenance fees. It goes into a receipts reserved account. This is just the accounting mechanism that allows them to spend the money that's been brought in.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Thirteen is to appropriate fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars to make various repairs to the Newbury Town Library. And that was included in the. Article thirteen is to appropriate fifty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars to make various repairs to the Newbury Town Library, and that was included in the DMS Design, Inc., I think was the name, that plan that was commissioned by the Capital Planning Committee, the building envelope studies.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
I just must say, this does not include the needed repairs.
Oh, says it right there, duh, I'm getting tired.
I just understand that...
This is year three of a twenty-year plan.
Right, yeah, so that, we're gonna have other things coming in the near future, but this is...
Oh, yeah.
Year seven or eight, we're gonna have a big one coming up.
Right, okay.
Right. Right. Article fourteen is a proposal made to repair the septic system at Mantle Fields in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. The Capital Planning Committee has recommended that that item be postponed and reviewed for action in a subsequent year.
Motion? We're, motion?
I'll make a motion to withdraw.
Second? Okay, now, question?
Well, I didn't make the motion to withdraw. Well, okay, you can turn down the motion if you don't wanna withdraw.
Yeah, now we can discuss it.
All right.
Where's the fifty grand coming from?
Stabilization fund.
Stabilization fund, that's what it says. All right, so, all right, so that doesn't come out of that, their revolving fund?
Uh-uh, they don't have enough money.
Okay. I mean, this is obviously a sore point in town, 'cause if Warren had installed the thing properly in the first place, it wouldn't be dealing with...
Absolutely not, David, absolutely not. Okay, I was involved with the construction, okay, and it was, it was built according to plans, all right, and at the time, our board of health agent took off to Arizona without doing any paperwork, all right? When he was in Arizona, ten years later, they went to hook in, and there was no paperwork that showed the thing was ever completed yet, it's not over. So as far as being installed, I think you should apologize for that.
No, I chose my words poorly.
Okay.
It wasn't properly permitted, and I wasn't necessarily putting blame on any one individual, but it was pretty embarrassing that we couldn't get something simple like this right in the first place.
As soon as we get this done, that place will be operational, and it'll, they'll be able to generate some funds over there.
Yeah.
Well, so it'll improve the reserve fund revenues for the Recreation Committee, right?
Why does, why does having a functional bathroom increase the revenues?
Because you can lease it out.
It's not the bathroom, it's the concession that's with it.
I see.
The food services.
I mean, I think the one recommendation has been to, rather than piecemeal it, quit the, what's the global cost and finish the whole project, and address it in that fashion. And that would require engaging an architect to say, here's the bathroom line, here's the concession line, and do the appropriate funding analysis so you can get it a hundred percent done. And I fully agree, once it's a hundred percent done, it will help self-sustain the Recreation Commission's recommendation.
I mean, this is a project that was started a long, long time ago, and because of the fact they didn't appropriate enough money, okay, at the time, Dick Joy was selectman, and he went to the rec committee and says, don't come to me for any more money. And they've operated that at no cost to the town, doing all the maintenance and everything, and they wanna finish it, okay, and it's been, I don't know how long, it's been at least eight or ten years.
Okay, Joe, don't get so defensive, 'cause I mean, I'm just, in some sense, just acting as a mouthpiece for people who've made various complaints about the rec committee, and the biggest one was that that was sold at town meeting as a facility that'd be multi-use. And the one thing that we have failed at is that it's not multi-use, that originally...
Why don't you go to a rec committee meeting?
Well, I think the rec committee, I think there's something else with our appointed committees, that we need to get better communication, you know, sort of between the board, you know, since we appoint them, and our appointed committees and so on, because, you know, again, you know, originally it was sold as being soccer, baseball, there was gonna be a playground for the little kids that, you know, I know myself, having been a parent of children of that age, and a daughter being involved in Little League and stuff, that it's really handy to have a playground there if you've got a younger sibling and you wanna watch your kid's game, but you gotta keep the young kid from being, getting bored and causing trouble, and then, you know, it was supposed to be a canoe-launching thing, and that may not have been as practical as people thought at the time, but it's just sort of, I, from time to time, hear complaints about the way the rec committee managed things, and I'm just trying to remind us of that as we go forward and try to complete the project for better, whether it meets the original goals or not, but at least get things, and I think, you know, an important selling point is this idea that we can't get any kind of concession in there if we don't get the septic system properly permitted and so on, so.
We gotta get to the finish line a hundred percent, what needs to be done, what the cost is, and then make sure all the design criteria applies, and there was a request last year for, the capital planning may have requested fifteen thousand dollars for professional services, so that studies like that, because from time to time, you need to do that, and it was gonna be, part of it was to, you know, engage services for completing what the scope of the field counts as, and getting it a hundred percent.
Right.
I think we should give high marks to the rec committee for getting all the work done, what they've done, out of revolving accounts and donated money, so not...
Right, I mean, I think, and also I think, you know, to Warren's credit, he's found ways of saving money through, at the very beginning, clever uses of cuts and fills and stuff like that, I think, at the same time, we should remind ourselves that we also bought the Kent Way property as part of that package, and, you know, going forward, you know, the rec committee said that's where we should put the baseball fields, we've done nothing about that, so we really haven't finished the product, project as it was sold at town meeting, and I can see, having looked for a canoe-launching site on that property, it's a tough one, I can see a way of doing it, but it would not be easy, so I can understand why that one would fall by the wayside, but a couple of these other things, I think, looking forward, we should...
I see the arguments on both sides, but the voters own that field, I think we should let the voters tell us yes to put the money in it or no to put the money in it, so let's approve this article, put it on the floor, and let them tell us what to do.
I'm completely with you on that one.
All right, well, the motions are made to withdraw.
I think there's one issue that capital planning rests with, is you wanna give the town a proper, complete picture of the project. Not partial, half, half fifty thousand, another hundred thousand, and with the argument being, we've already invested a fifty thousand in the septic system, we need to spend another fifty or hundred to finish the project, and we wanted to get everything inclusive in one vote, and I agree with you, it should be a vote, eyes wide open, total cut. And I agree, in some cases, that if it does drive, and the issue could be argued, if it does drive increased revenue to the fee of operations, that whether that money could be used in some other fashion to offset some of these investments, but as we see, your comment's very well taken, it's not complete the way it was sold, and we don't know what those completion costs should or could be, and we'd like to put them together in a complete package. I don't think necessarily, you know, fifty thousand for the septic is all that bad, I agree, but we don't know what the total cost investment the town's gonna make on the field is going to be.
And the sad part of it is, and correct me if I don't understand the mechanics of how that money would be or go, but if this fifty thousand dollars, if we could've looked at it maybe in pieces, if the fifty grand had provided bathrooms and food service, and maybe all the shelters to visitors and things came later, you would have food services and bathrooms, and the food services would be helping to pay for the other things.
Again, it could be the case, I don't know that these guys would pay it off.
So it's too bad we didn't look at it maybe in that way, 'cause now we'd be there.
I think that's what we're trying to look at it, Jeff, but we're just not quite there yet, and again, it's not the willingness of the request, it's the status of the request as far as...
And I guess what I mean by that, though, real quick, is if, if, if the septic system would facilitate bathrooms and food services, maybe it wouldn't, you could, you could go ten years from now finishing up everything else, and it would be paid for by food services.
Not likely.
The one thing on the septic system that you have to keep in mind is, it's the end use of the, of the structure. If you add a ditch washer, it increases twofold your septic requirements, if you don't put in all the bathrooms that you might be touching, the cost could be substantially lower, it's, it's just having, what's the complete design, complete package, so you do it correctly to get this to the finish line?
Can we...
And also, just let me say, my motivation for making an motion to withdraw was based on the recommendation, the recommendation of the committee and not, 'cause I had some extra grind or something like that.
Can we just add to that motion that we take it off the annual town meeting warrant and try to shoot as a timeline for the special town meeting to get...
Well, I think if, I think that would be an appropriate action, but I think we need to commit to special fees to get the next step done on, on paper, so that we get the professional design for the complete picture, and it may very well be pursued and is factored in over three years, fifty thousand for septic, a certain amount of donated and raised funds, but let's see what it takes to get this done a hundred percent, 'cause that's what the citizens need for the...
Can, I just wanna say something, I'm disgusted, okay? Last year, when we talked about this, Bob and I sat with a member of the rec committee, and Bob sat there and said, I will do whatever it takes to bring this over the finish line for town meeting. Do you remember that meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you made a promise to the rec committee that you would do whatever it took to come over the, bring this over the finish line, what happened?
One, Joe, we requested one, that it had to be a complete package, that hasn't changed.
You said you would take care of those things, 'cause your business expertise and your business did that, you told that to a member of the rec committee?
What we said is, one, the rec committee needs to demonstrate overwhelming town support for the project, that was one.
So let's take it to the voters and see.
Two, it was to engage professional services, of which a request was made, and to this element, it'd be added last year, so we could conduct, get the final cost associated, that was, that's what it was, Joe.
Okay, I guess I didn't understand that conversation.
And the fifteen thousand dollar request that was not acted upon would be something that you would have to discuss with your own board.
But I think what's interesting, you brought up some interesting comments about what was sold to the town, is inconsistent with what's being delivered in the project, and that should be factored into the...
Yeah, I think that's it.
And if they're not to be done, if there's not to be a canoe-launching ramp, then it should be so identified that that's not in the plan.
I mean, I think, again, you know, given, you know, this reasonable proposal, step number one is identifying what the end game is, 'cause otherwise you can't tell your consultants what to, what to look at.
The end game is to provide a safe place for the youth of Newbury to go engage in sports, that's what it is.
I don't agree with that, Joe.
Yeah, that's a goal, but it's not a specification, and we need to say, okay, in order to achieve that goal, we need A, B, and C, and then we can say, okay, whether we try to do it in-house or hire a consultant, we can figure out what A, B, and C are gonna cost.
Those fields are the best fields in North of Boston for soccer, no question, and it's used by many towns other than town Newbury, right?
Right.
And they're, and they take good care of it, they raise substantial funds and take care of it with all the costs associated, this concession thing issue was essentially to add to the, to the deliverable, you said, fine, we're not objecting to it, the question is, we want the total cost.
It was in the original plans, the letter.
Okay, fine, I did not see, but it's...
It was in the original plans.
The total cost, it's not in there.
Yeah, but to be fair, it wasn't, there was no comprehensive plan when it was sold to the voters, right, and over time, you know, plans have developed, and we just need to take it to the next step, and that's why I was, you know, in agreement with your recommendation.
The motion's been made and seconded.
To remove the article.
To remove the article.
Okay.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I think I'm opposed to removing it without doing something else in its place, whether if we're gonna put it into a situation that's gonna put it on for a long time, can we substitute language in an article?
You can write whatever article you want, if you wanna put an article for funding...
Why don't we at least get this thing going with everyone's request with enough money to research this correctly, and not come up with something that is prohibitive in the eyes of the vote, but come up with something that shows the end result, but shows a way to implement it over time.
If we were to hire a consultant, as you're recommending, what would it, what would it cost, do you think?
I, I mean, I would say you're gonna be in the probably the five to eight thousand range to have an architect come in and do the, 'cause you're not doing construction drawings, you're really doing, you know, the MVP drawing, whether you need for full power, mechanical ventilation, and...
But when you talk about comprehensive, are you talking about the canoe launch and the playground, you're just...
Finishing this asset that's...
This project, so then I would agree with that amount.
And it just, we need a set of construction drawing that prices can be determined and a permit can be secured.
And I'd like to take and stipify it.
It could be funded out of professional services and FY fifteen, really.
We have, that request for the fifteen thousand, we didn't put it on the warrant because we had money available in the professional and technical services account, so there's fifteen thousand dollars, that was the not to exceed amount at the time, available for that.
And then, I like hearing that, 'cause then that's saying, okay, we could start like right away, almost with...
You can pull the trigger on that tomorrow.
Today.
Yeah, we still have to get the, the sort of big picture punch list or whatever you wanna call it, I don't know if you should call it...
We need to get this complete, get it done once and for all right, and it's gonna be a wonderful facility.
Right.
That could considerably not be done by, by fall meeting.
That's what I'm thinking, that, you know, if we can, you know, again, with capital planning, working with the rec committee and stuff, figuring out what being done means, so we can then say, okay, to whoever consultant we work with, that here's what we need to know, you figure out...
If we need final drawings, say, that even gives you parking, you don't have to do it all, but you have the roadmap to the finish line.
Right.
And that's, that's the, that's the point I'd like to almost...
Sam's title, building facilities manager?
I'd almost like to have a criteria, that we don't have to look, we can do this in phases, in functional phases.
No, but there's a, the Recreation Committee is in charge of that facility, so that would be...
We need to have a complete stove, then we'll determine how we can pay for it, whether...
Right.
I don't understand.
And maybe, and maybe complete. And with a little bit of luck, we could be ready for, for fall town meeting.
All right, I got a wacky question here, we, you're talking, spending a lot of money on professional services, but we have a building facilities manager here that we pay, he done a wonderful job on two buildings that I'm aware of, actually three, why don't we sic him on it, see what needs to be done, I mean, the guy's pretty good, so...
You have to look at it from a professional standpoint, you need stamp drawing.
So he's not a pro?
No, he's a registered architect, and has stamp drawing, and then you get into a conflict with him, you can't be designing the work, inspecting the work, and Sam is doing an outstanding job as that facility manager.
Yep, and we own the building, so I mean, I think he has every right to go in and check it out, I mean...
So he's part of the, he's part of the team that will determine with a professional architect and engineer, what do we need to get completed, in conjunction with the, with the...
So Tracy, do we foresee any other reasons we'd use that money that's put aside already for this type of...
Nope, it's not committed to anything.
I mean, should we commit it with an article or just kind of...
No, no, it's already available in the appropriation we made.
We'll spend it before next year's...
You have to spend it prior to June thirtieth or encumber it prior to June thirtieth.
We also have an article coming up, article coming for sixty thousand dollars to renew the town's master plan and the open space and recreation plan.
Well, why don't we...
It's much broader than just Mantle Fields.
It's very different.
Yeah.
All of this is actually a capital...
Having been personally involved in the last master plan, it's really different.
I was wondering when you were gonna get that in.
All of these things are so worthy, but when you have schools and libraries that are in disrepair, you know, that's where the community preservation is, the issue that restricted funding that you can only allocate for all of these things that we struggle to raise to a level of priority to get them funded.
All right, where were we on the vote, Mr. Chairman?
We need a vote.
We need a vote, okay, we're waiting for Jeff's vote, and Jeff wanted to clarify it.
I'll vote to let it go, I mean to...
With or?
With or.
Okay.
If, you know, absolutely, because we're gonna go ahead and put together what we need to do.
Okay, so that's three to one. What?
I'm confused, what happened?
Three to one to remove the article?
I voted to remove it, Jeff voted, David did.
To remove it?
To remove it.
Okay, it's done, very good. Okay, it's done, though, very good.
It's, it's all it gets, it.
Unanimous?
Yeah, unanimous, yeah.
Unanimous to remove it.
To remove it.
No, I voted no, not to remove it.
All right, Chuck voted no, not to remove it.
So four to one.
Can we fully expect this to be back in and?
Well, we, we were promised it would be here for this spring, I'll remind you, okay? I remind you.
The money request was made, but there's a discussion.
Okay, Article fifteen, transfer thirty seven thousand dollars from the stabilization fund to make repairs to the Grange Hall. Again, this was at the recommendation of DMS Design. I think it's important to note that the capital planning committee has asked that this be deferred. It, it appears because the Buildings and Grounds Superintendent had the, the analysis done, the building envelope study done. It identified windows as an issue, that's why it's being presented before you, there's, there's, there's no, there's no endorsement for keeping the building or selling the building, or. It, it's just identifying the issues per the engineering report, so that's what you have in front of you.
And.
Motion?
I make a motion, we, uh, approve, oh, transfer of funds thirty seven thousand, uh, about this, to, for the, from the stabilization fund to make repairs to the Grange Hall. Any other relation there to?
Second?
Yep.
Okay, now, discussion, David had a comment.
Well, I just want to know, sort of, where you guys are coming from on this one.
Well, the recommendation was put on hold to review next year, and the finance committee voted not to recommend, add our own speed.
Reason being?
Rational behind it, essentially, there's some, there's some issue with the septic system, yet to be identified.
Okay.
There was a question on our minds as to, even though there was a, some, a, a misunderstanding as to the yellow school building, septic system, town of Grange type of amateur. We also raised the.
That's all been resolved, that's, we went to sale of the property, that's a non-issue.
Yeah.
Again, but, you know, as the question was raised, the other one was that, was the condition of the building in total, we did it outside, envelope study correct? We did, we repaired the roof, took the tree down, which we felt was the most prudent thing to protect the integrity of the building. The building is housed, the building is used for a lot of activity, we questioned whether it should have a sprinkle system in it, an office of wood frame building, it's not sprinkled.
I believe our building inspector said, no, it doesn't need to be, he's our code enforcement guy.
And Sam, the question, the question was, is that, that was the issue, was it sure there should not be, was, we never got a definitive statement from him that it could go, could not be, it doesn't have to be. Because there's some question, how many people are actually physically there, whether it's over two hundred and fifty or something of that nature. But the question is a wood frame building, and the question is, should be, is it proved to consider a.
What are we in here?
Sprinkle building, you know, that was the question, and that was the thing that we raised, so to get a complete cost structure of what all outstanding costs were. This was, this was an article that came in under piecemeal basis, a little for this, a little for that, trying to get essentially what the total cost was for putting the building complete to up to code. Question, does it have handicap access, ramps?
It does, look at it, you can look at it.
No, wait.
They wanted to, they wanted to look at the front stairs, they're in disrepair, they should be fixed, there was, there were a number of things that were coming up that were not clarified at CPC to say. And it's not that it shouldn't be done, the question was, what's the total?
Also, the, they've been given free release now for the Grange Hall in order to get a five oh one C three designation, or to, to raise money for this.
The senior program grandfather.
There's already been one offer that might cover half of it, if they can raise the other half, so it's a little unclear as to what all that means. And, and whether it should come out of stabilization money now versus raising a grant, you know, half of which has already been offered.
There's been a lot of things mentioned here, but, um, nothing says a lot of these issues can't be handled over time. But the most important thing is that the windows be replaced, it'll help us with the heat, and it'll make the thing tighter, and, and there'll be less damage, you know, from leakage and storms or whatever. Those windows that are there are really, I don't know how long they, they've been there since the building was built, I believe, and.
I think you're right.
Now, Mike, you've hit my hot button, because I have a lot of personal experience paying for these kinds of things with my own dollar, and so I've really researched them extensively, and I can show you the federal studies if you care to read them, and. Quite honestly, based on my assessment and my experience, the sash themselves are actually in surprisingly good shape, and that we need to do a little cleanup on them in terms of. The glazing compound is falling off in places and stuff like that, but, that, it's been shown that if you have original windows, but in good condition, and that's the way I would assess the building. And you add storm windows, you get the same energy efficiency that you get from replacement windows, and most people listen to the replacement window ads on TV, they don't look at the guarantees. You know, they'll tell you, oh, this thing's good for a lifetime, whatever, but you actually look at the details, some things are guaranteed for long periods of time, but usually, there's something that's only good for twenty years. And I have personal experience in that sense also, you know, with an old house and new, modern additions, and what tends to fail is all the plastic stuff. And so, you know, like my, got a little sunroom type thing we created with nice big, high-quality patio doors, the wood holds up fine, the glass holds up fine. It's all the plastic bits that are falling apart, and most of our, you know, these replacement windows are largely some form of plastic in terms of the stuff that holds everything together, so. You know, the joke in the preservation community is that, yeah, we call them replacement windows, because you replace them, and you replace them, and you replace them, and so. Just even at that little level of detail, there can be a big difference in price depending on which route you take, and then that extends to all these other things, if we don't even know what all the stuff is, that.
We allocated the money for the roof, which we, we, CPC said was immediately, we found that the roof sheathing was in significant disrepair. And notice to us, the original allocation of twenty thousand, goes to thirty thousand, because the condition of the underlying roof was, was essentially the way it was, because they probably used wood shingles. And it was, and they laid asphalt on half of it, so we had to replace the entire roof with, you know, plywood.
Plywood.
And the issue was, is that it wasn't specked out in the contract, even if it was when they took the shingles out, oh, by the way, we got a problem. And, and again, that caused us to be rather sensitive, that's what it is that concerned me personally was, it isn't that the value is there, it's, it's what we don't know. Could add, add the cost increase to the, to the building company, and that's really was where we kind of just said, we needed to get a complete understanding of what it was. I understand the septic system, fine, let, we get a report on that, that's no problem, the sprinkler system still concerns me personally, it's a wood frame building where young kids gather. I don't necessarily see an idyllic against it, I like to know what the cost would be, and then factor it in, and put sprinklers in that building for the protection of the people that are housed there, and congregate, come scouting, whatever they do inside the building, because it's wood frame buildings. And it's one of the few buildings that we would be significantly liable for if something major happened to it, and that's what I was concerned about, and this is that. The eye, the pushback I got, which is my first, was it, well, we're gonna have to sprinkle it, we want to keep the cost down, because we want to get what we want, to get the windows fixed, and I reject, don't do that, give the total picture to me, and what all the cost would be, and then move ahead.
After listening to David and Larry, my only question for clarification is, from the analysis, what does the thirty seven thousand dollars do? It says repair the windows, I'm just curious, what does that mean?
The, the amount that you have before.
From, what did the, does anyone know what the analysis said to repair, are we gonna have repaired windows and storm windows?
The original request was for fifty seven thousand dollars, and it was for a scope of work that had been identified in the building survey report.
The engineering report.
The engineering report, twenty thousand was funded while the other was placed on hold to initiate the replacement of the roof. So this is really the remainder of that, now, part of that, and, and this would be a Sam question, I think, part of that was doing the chimney and doing some other repairs, which I think have been funded out of.
He's gonna do out of his.
Out of all maintenance accounts.
Yep.
So whether the whole thirty seven thousand is needed for the windows and all, I don't know.
So, in other words, we're gonna repair the sashes, or do you kind of repair the windows?
No, it was.
I think it was scheduled for replacement.
Replacement, replacement.
Yeah.
That's a not to exceed, so, you know.
And it doesn't say windows, it talks about repairs.
Bet the rationale is, except windows.
And by the way, I would, I would testify to what you're saying about storm windows, we had storm windows put in our place, thirty, seventy three windows for three, thirty two hundred dollars, and they're good, good storm windows, and they've made a huge difference in protecting the windows and on, on saving heat in the house. I'm amazed at what they've done, you know, and, and I would argue that the guy, the art, the firm that, that did the original study, I really have a question, why they didn't understand that, that new interlayment was needed in the roof? You could take pictures of it, it was spaced like, like this.
I think, yeah, was the space gonna, because they couldn't get nail on, I'm still just caught a little bit up on, uh, the work includes repairs to the windows. Are we repairing that original sash like David's talking about?
No, it's replacement, as identified in the, in the engineering report, it's replacement.
Replacement.
Well, again.
That was what was.
If we do it as, you know, the, the thing is, the appropriation is not to exceed.
That can change. Right.
And if we come up with an equivalent or better solution for less money, you know.
Right.
Thank, you know, praise the Lord, and it's just like the roof, that, you know, I'm just putting the finishing touches in project number nine. Uh, and, uh, two, the latest project in my current home, I own, I have to pay the heating bills, so I know a little bit about this stuff, but it's like with the roof. What you do, if you're used to dealing with old buildings, you do a little exploratory surgery in there, you know, and it doesn't take much disruption, you can figure out pretty quickly whether I probably got a problem or I don't have a problem, and again. You know, most contractors today, or, and even architects, haven't been trained in how to deal with old buildings, you know, we're dealing with one that's a hundred years old or something like that, but.
We've, we've come a long way, David, we're establishing the protocol.
Absolutely, I completely congratulate what you're doing, yeah, and, and again, you know, when we, if and when we do appropriate this money, then we can start thinking about, okay, what's the best approach? Both from an energy point of view, maintenance, upfront cost and all that kind of stuff, but, but I do, just like with what you were telling us about the, the soccer fields and so forth. I completely understand why you folks are saying, let's, let's get a big picture, you know, the windows can wait a year, but the roof really couldn't wait much longer, and I, again, if you can keep the rain out, you get, you buy your, you buy yourself a lot of time. And that's where we blew it on the, you know, the, our former school next door, is that we didn't keep the water out. So, again, I'm supportive of.
Well, you know, it's.
Just buy, just take a little extra time to get the big.
It does require a focus on stabilization, that's gonna require two thirty.
Correct.
No problem, it's up to them to sell it.
And, and again, CPA, we would be.
We'll get to that.
That's later on.
Motion, second.
Motion, second.
All right, now, Mr. Chairman, the vote, the motion on the table is to approve Article fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And, and once again, Article fifteen, the whole thirty seven thousand might not be used.
Not to exceed.
Right, it's fixing the windows.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you restricting it to just the windows?
No, I would recommend you change the language to repair slash replace.
See, because this just says maintenance on anything.
Well, I mean.
So you can decide.
The article says to.
Make repairs.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Windows.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't say windows.
No. So it's a.
You get, you get thirty seven thousand will be spent in total.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
And, uh, it can be spent on windows, it can be spent on windows plus other things.
If they're done painting, doing anything they want, if thirty seven thousand's approved, it's all gonna be repaired, the, making this the Grange Hall.
Hmm, right.
If they're doing anything they deem appropriate, just, would be windows, would be.
The windows would.
Sam's gonna deem that.
Yeah.
Remember, this is the article, the motion will be very specific, if you don't want this used on windows, we need to know that. The plan here, the presentation of this article is for windows, if the quote came in at thirty five thousand, and there was two thousand left over, and the motion said for windows, it couldn't be spent for anything else.
We have to put that in there.
Well, I think we're looking at, we, all we've talked about is windows tonight.
Right.
So what do you want to do?
The deal is change, Joe, expand our response, when you open to pick up the windows, you could ask the structural manager need to address, so.
Yeah.
But that's, that's in the spirit of the article, I think that to then say, well, we're gonna use the other two thousand for the stairs or a chimney, that might be a stretch.
That's absurd.
Yeah.
Unless the motion says that.
Yeah, thirty seven thousand of leftover from an original request, based on a report.
Right.
That's, I think that's the way I would look at it, and windows is part of that, but there, there are some other things that we can add to, if, if it goes, if it goes.
All right. And the reason, just to summarize the recommendation and the rationale behind it from you folks, is that you would prefer to put this off a little bit till we have a more complete picture of, of the total cost?
I mean, capital planning's goal is to have a complete game plan of all our assets, so we can play it for the next twenty, of what we need to maintain, yeah, same thing for this book. Sprinklers on every building reduces your insurance cost by eighty percent on a wood structure.
I'm not so sure that's a good number, because we talked about that last year, but anyway, whatever, it's, there's a benefit.
But, you know, but. That, that's one of the reasons you look at that stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, move the motion, please.
All right, all in favor of?
Now, we want to add, we, would you?
No, you can do it as it is, and I'll make sure the motion reflects what you want.
Okay, all in favor of Article fifteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Put it before the voters, I'll put it before the voters, aye?
Aye, all right.
I'll vote nay, but we needed four, so you got your four.
You'll vote nay, okay. All right. Okay.
So did you vote, Joe?
Yeah, yes, I voted yes.
Okay, Article sixteen is the Recreation Revolving Fund, the annual appropriation of fifty thousand.
That's been that way for several years, right?
Correct.
Okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
So, yeah.
Any question, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Article seventeen is the Harbor Master Revolving Fund, appropriation of seventy thousand.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article eighteen is requesting to transfer thirty five thousand from the Waterways Maintenance and Improvement Fund. And the plan would be to purchase a twenty to twenty-two foot center console patrol boat, and also, the, the parker is currently being evaluated for current value. I would ask at all likelihood at the next selectmen's meeting that you declare that surplus and it be sold at, for a competitive bid. It would be disposed of, they, the current Harbor Masters feel that's too big of a boat.
I'm puzzled by the wording, it says to transfer the sum of so-and-so from the, this fund, to what?
To buy the boat.
Well, but the article doesn't say that, right?
To purchase.
The article doesn't tell us what it's.
Well, like we say, to transfer from free cash to purchase a fire shark to transfer.
As you were saying, we're gonna take money out of this fund, and we're gonna transfer it to something else, but.
No, we're going to transfer it from the Waterways and Maintenance Account to purchase a boat, just like we transfer from the stabilization fund.
I know that's the intent, but I don't see that in the language of the article.
To transfer the sum of thirty five thousand or any other sum from the Waterways Maintenance and Improvement Fund. Oh, to purchase, I, I see, I'm sorry, I'm tired, I'm sorry, yep.
We, we need to just.
Yep, to purchase, yep, I see.
To purchase an equipable boat.
Yep.
Right, so.
Exactly.
So I guess we can start by moving the article and then amend it to fix that little oversight, yeah, okay.
Got it.
Second.
All right, so I'll offer a friendly amendment to insert the, for what?
To purchase an equipable.
To purchase an equipable.
Okay, amendment made, second, any other discussion of the amendment, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go back to the original article as amended, motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second, okay, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I should have mentioned to you, that has not been reviewed by capital planning yet, it's, um, before them on the seventeenth.
It's not ever reviewed. Yeah, the next.
At the next meeting. Article nine. Um, Article nineteen, to see if the town vote to transfer, um, the sum of thirty-one thousand from free cash to fund a townwide inventory and analysis of all of Newbury's roads.
Motion?
I move, so move.
Second. Okay, discussion, questions?
So again, this is part of developing this plan that we desperately need for so many things.
Absolutely.
Show how bad a shape we're in.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, thirty-one thousand will pave a lot of roads, you know, here we go again.
Actually, it won't.
No, it won't. No, it won't.
Fill a few potholes, that's about it.
Yeah.
That won't do my.
Yeah, but.
That won't do my driveway.
Yeah, right.
All we gotta do is drive around, take a look, okay, yeah. I, I just don't.
No, that, actually, actually, what's done is, and state has to do this every five years, is evaluate on a scale of one to five. Now, there's a bunch of criteria, all state and, and actually federal highways and roads, so, and there was equipment to do that and so forth, so it needs to be done by an engineer and a legislator doing.
And also, with the software package, they're doing, normally for.
Yeah, that's a real big thing.
For the, for the status of the roads, but when you do a pavement situation and a road is paved, it's also recorded as to when action or any expense was put on a particular road. So when people say, well, no, no one ever has touched X, Y, Z road, you know, for twenty-four years, ten years ago, we could have done to it.
Exactly.
But looking at the software scenario, we have Capital Planning, I think before I mentioned Gene folks, that we were really kind of outside, out reviewed roads, so we looked at the software. The real cost is here, is in the actual engineering assessment of the road itself. That is the road surface, the, the embankments, the, what's, what the road's composed of, what is underlying the structure of the road, a complete analysis of the road. And that's what this will do.
Yeah.
And that establishes the baseline for inventory of the road, the condition, and moving forward. When you do something, it is so being recorded that this is picked up.
No, I think.
I understand all that. Okay.
But.
All right. Have we made a motion on it?
A motion, second.
Motion, second. Any other questions, discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I am.
Okay. Article twenty.
Sixty thousand dollars to update the, um, master plan as well as the open space and recreation plan. The last, um, master plan was two thousand and six, um.
Wow.
It's time.
I, I'm boggled by that. Sixty grand?
That, again, it's an amount not to exceed, we'd go out for a competitive bid.
Well, again, I think.
That's for both plans.
Martha can explain as well as I can, but, uh, in this process, uh, what we have done in the past is we hire a consultant to work with our planning board and the town planner and so forth to, uh, help us, you know, to some extent gather the data, but then also sort of help us get the report together and so on. It's a, it's a very big undertaking, as Martha knows well, and, uh, you know, I mean, what we did the last time around, and we hadn't done one for, since, what, I forgot what it was, nineteen eighty-five or something before that. You know, and, uh, you know, often people recommend you do this like every five years or something, and so, and that timescale, we're a little bit behind, but, uh, it's a really big deal, 'cause if you may remember, you know, we did a, uh, sort of an opinion survey on a whole range of topics, you know, and, you know, to get feedback from the, you know, all our citizens and so forth, and, uh, just put it together, the information, 'cause, you know, in this thing, you gotta sort of say, here's where we are, here's where we wanna go and why, type stuff, and so it's a, it's a huge project. It's not just, it'll be a little easier this time, 'cause probably the goals and so forth won't change that much from last time, but you go back and you look at, I forget the one, there was two ones back, but, uh, that was amazing, especially people who, who either live on or love Plum Island, should look at that one. It was like urban renewal on steroids, they're gonna basically level the island, you know, dredge the entire basin with full-service marinas and hotels and, you know, it would have been sort of the Miami Beach of the north or something, so.
We wouldn't have been worried about our budget tonight, you know.
Well, who knows, you know, Miami Beach has its own set of problems, but still, it's like, you know, you wanna update it both, because, you know, we may have made progress on the recommendations of the last plan, and there may be new conditions that are arising, you know, that we need to address.
The problem that I have is, when we do these things, very few, as far as the, of the citizens get involved with it, and we end up.
That's why they hire the consultants, so that's.
We end up with like a vocal minority that has a lot of input to it.
That's actually not true, in the sense that we deliberately were aware of that problem and that's why we did the survey, and we got a, for, as surveys go, we got a pretty darn good return.
But it's a good return, we also have a pretty good group of people who was involved with it.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't just the.
I, I go back to the survey that was done on use in the Paca River, and there was something like thirty-some what people responded to it, and all but two said there should be no power boats in the Paca River, and that's how it was written up and sent into the state, okay?
Or the management plan that, under the scenic rivers.
So I mean, it's important to get a lot of input in it, that's my point. When we did this in two thousand and six, was this what we spent?
Um, I think, yeah, we had, um, I think we had had an ongoing appropriation of fifty thousand dollars that, that funded it.
Did we spend all of it and?
No, I honestly don't remember. I did meet with somebody recently, kind of to talk through what the process might be, and, and she, kind of independently, I didn't even remember, but did say, you know, potentially around fifty thousand.
And also, this is a little different, and then it's both master plan and open space and recreation plan, and there's some overlap there, so it makes sense to try to do.
Didn't we do the open space last time though, too?
Oh, we did that, and, um, it's, um, up for expiration, so it's time.
Yeah, and also the way the state's going, having up-to-date plans of both flavors helps you when you're trying to get state funding for projects and stuff like that, so.
If we don't spend it all, where does it go? Back into free cash.
Close is back into free cash.
All right.
Martha, is this something we could have to be now, or can you run along with us a while?
Well, the recommendation in the master plan was to do an update every five years, and we were actually eight years.
Every what?
Five years.
Okay, thank you.
And we're eight years, and, um, some of it's been going through, and actually, they've accomplished a lot of the goals that were in there, but there are new ones that we didn't even address at the time, you know, some of the climate change and sea level rise and things like that, and, and it seems like an appropriate time, actually.
No, okay.
And we have the twenty-ten census, like demographics have changed.
Changed.
We're projecting growth, which actually hasn't happened.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with certain issues that are still ongoing.
Yeah, and that's where you start bringing things like our population is clearly aging, the number of individuals per household is decreasing, there's a lot of things just on the demographic front that are, are changing, and so, uh, the reason our population hasn't increased is 'cause the number of households have gone up. Yeah, a bunch of empty nesters, right?
Wow.
Yeah, no, I'm not aging, but you are.
Okay, I need a motion.
All right.
Is that, okay, a motion to, uh, uh, approve the article, yeah.
To prove the article. Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I may add an article, and just so you're aware, for.
Just for clarification, I, I really do think we gotta get the head count right, 'cause we put in what the vote was, and, you know, if it's five zero zero or five.
I, I am.
Jeff didn't really vote.
Do you want me to vote against?
Oh, you didn't vote?
I don't care.
Vote one time or?
No, I, um, it's, it's too late, I'll vote for it. I think it's way too much money.
Yeah.
Well, we'll go out for a bid.
We can amend it in the, at the town meeting?
Couldn't agree more.
Okay. You can bring them down. We should have taken ten thousand, put it into car wages.
Oh, roads.
Right, so, five zero zero?
The vote's five zero, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I've gotta look up the date of our last, um, actuarial analysis. We maybe do for an update this year. If we are, I did get a quote, it would be fifty-seven hundred, so I'll confirm that. If not, I'll put it on in the fall. Bylaws, the twenty-one and twenty-two, you have those in your annual town meeting warrant every year. I, I have no idea why they're there, I, I've got those before council too, asking why we do it. I, I'm not sure if they need to be there, so, um, if you want to wait till next week, uh, next meeting for those, or if you wanna vote it now, that's fine to leave.
Why don't we vote them in pending town councils say we don't need it?
Okay.
We can always withdraw them, get it over with, okay? Motion?
I'll make a motion, we, um, put in Article twenty-one and twenty-two unless town council tells us otherwise.
Second motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-three, um, these haven't had the public hearing yet, correct?
Uh, public hearing is next Wednesday, sixteen.
Is next Wednesday, so they're just in draft format, so you don't wanna vote on these yet.
Oh.
True, yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So.
Twenty-four.
If you move to page twenty-seven, no, and Article twenty-six.
Okay, so those ones you're saying skip over, these are all the, sort of the zoning type stuff that hasn't had the public hearing yet.
Yeah.
So we're, we're still expecting to have something like this, but the actual language could change, yeah.
They're, they're on now, it's just a matter of final language, unless the board has any strong feeling about removing them. So on page thirty, the next one is, um, Article twenty-seven, which was the amendments to the Capital Planning Committee bylaw. You had met with, um.
Nick.
Nick Oram to talk about some of the proposed items and three of. Oh, no?
Uh, twenty-seven, Article twenty-six, that's not a zoning thing, so it's, uh, it's not a zoning thing, it's not a final order conservation condition, it's a zoning.
Oh, okay.
Oh, on page twenty-se, page twenty-seven, article number twenty-six. Yeah, thank you, Martha.
Yeah, John's been working hard, it's, it's.
Yeah.
You have, yes.
This is a good time to, to shift the responsibility for stormwater permitting to the county.
Motion to approve Article twenty-six.
Second. Any other discussion, questions on it?
Makes sense.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, back to Article twenty-seven.
So now, page thirty, Article twenty-seven, is the Capital Planning Committee. You need to decide, uh, I think the two issues that were being considered for discussion the last time we had talked about it were, um, the committee membership and the, um, the criteria for, um, for meeting the, the capital, um, planning criteria, the dollar amount, the cost, um, section twelve-three, item number three.
Added, uh, the committee shall study proposed capital projects and improvements involving major, major non-recurring tangible assets and projects which are purchased or undertaken at intervals of not less than five years and have a useful life of at least five years and cost over twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, was it the, the, the cost thing that was?
It was the cost over twenty-five thousand, you were debating.
What the number should be.
Yeah.
Whether or not, I, I, I'm sorry, right now it's at ten thousand.
Okay.
We were talking about whether you wanted to increase it to twenty-five.
I would increase it to fifty.
Well, we were trying to, the idea of the twenty-five, that brings us in alignment with the state bidding.
Procurement.
Yeah, stuff.
Right.
Yeah. We gotta pick an, if we're gonna pick a number, that seems like a logical starting point, is just at least be consistent with what we have to do for the, the bidding, uh, rules.
Today's price is fifty thousand, isn't a lot.
I agree.
Looking at that point, you're right. So.
But again, it's kind of a moving target, and I see this as a good move in the right direction, whether we wanna go higher in the future or not, I'm not so sure, but it, uh, at least it's getting us beyond sort of the routine repair type stuff, and it's starting to get.
Okay.
Close to.
What else, oh, it goes on.
Well, now, we're, we're gonna decide on this, this number here, okay?
All right, so you're asking for a motion to amend, the article is read here from twelve dash three, line three, cost of over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's actually two things, but that's one of the two.
That's what, yeah, the one we're at right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd like it to go over fifty, Mike?
I would.
Okay, Jeff, what's your thoughts?
What are we doing, was there a motion for what?
Well, we've, we've got a motion, I think, to approve, and now the question is, do we wanna amend? Or is that right, I'm losing track.
Amend the, amend the cost?
We don't have a motion at all, yes.
Oh, so we need a motion approved, then we can worry about amending it.
I'll make a motion that we.
I just made one, Mike.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Oh, wait, we, we gotta have a, a motion on the article before we can amend it, right?
This is a motion to amend the article we have here.
We gotta, we haven't, we haven't moved the article, and we can't amend it till we move the article, right?
Okay.
So we just, I move that we move the article.
Twenty-seven, second.
And now.
Now you can vote to amend it.
No, you gotta second it for.
Thank you.
I did, I said it.
Thank you for the correction, I stand corrected here.
Okay.
Been sitting too long. So, um, the, um, amendment is twelve dash three, line three, change from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
Okay.
And are we, are we amending twelve dash one?
No, we haven't gotten to that yet, so we're just working on one, just that number.
Just the number of this one here.
On page thirty-one.
Okay, so Chuck made a motion to amend it from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
That's what you want, right?
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay.
A second, okay.
Okay, so discussion on the number.
Discussions, questions, whatever.
I'm, I'm, I think twenty-five is appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, in the future, we may wanna go higher, but I think for now, twenty-five's a good a number, and it blinds up, as I say, what the state.
All in favor of the amendment?
All right.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, and I'll vote in favor of it.
So what's the count?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Okay, all right.
So now we need to vote on the whole.
Well, we gotta deal with number, item twelve-one on page thirty, the.
Well.
And the big change here really is that, I think, is adding the, the one member of the board of selectmen, is that, am I right, in that sense that, compared to where we are right now, that's the.
Consistent.
The, the significant change from where we are now.
Town council, one member of the finance committee.
Right?
Yeah. One member of the board of selectmen.
No, it changes it because it's presently two members of the finance committee on it.
Oh, that, yeah, that's, that's the makeup for the.
One calls for one.
Right, but you gotta, if you want to keep the same number, you've gotta.
Then there's also two members from the general public.
Yep.
And you have only one, the total composition of the board is presented in twelve dash one.
And what did you have before, five? Well, you, you need an even.
I'm losing the headcount here.
If you're gonna vote on things.
The question was, is that the selectmen's feeling was that they wanted to be participated in capital planning, which was, the discussion, the question was, is that whose position should they sit in for itself to retain five? And I don't know necessarily, was the original discussion was, the town manager Tracy would be not a voting member of capital planning, but advisory and would stay, a selectman would take her spot. But the way this calls for it is that she retains a position with the selectman and also one, and if it comes to colors to four people, not five.
But you intended me to be a non-voting member.
Right, yeah.
So you found.
Gene had a comment on.
Well, that was one of my points was usually, the town minister was an advisor.
Yeah, no, that was.
Right.
My second question is a broader one, is there something wrong with the way that capital planning is functioning, or?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what, can you tell us what's wrong, because we think it's done a great job.
Okay.
A great job.
I say that I think it could be improved on, okay, it should be tweaked, okay, right now, capital.
But that's not answering the question, what needs to be tweaked and why?
I think we need to have a selectman and a member of the finance committee on there, okay, and then the other people, uh, we appoint, uh, from the general public.
You know, the selectmen already have a, a, a major input to capital allocation. You know, I, I would think that this capital planning committee, the way it's structured now, you know, provides some protection politically, and, and it shouldn't be.
I think it lays us wide open politically, okay?
In, in what, in what sense, Tom?
What are the things we've discussed tonight? Okay, it's, it's like, I get the impression going to the capital planning committee, it's like that movie with Paul Newman, The Wrong Rock, you know, that's why.
I miss that movie, tell me how.
I've honored for you, the capital planning committee essentially established the rules and regulations that, number one, we wanted the individual request in by November, and there was some indication that we weren't responsible. And if you just see tonight with the request to buy the boat from the harbor master, it wasn't in by November, and it still would be considered for the year, so I think that argument is relatively weak. The second comment was essentially was the issue of, of the not approving any particular project, as we were wanting to put it on hold, but we have approved tremendous amounts of projects in total.
Right now, there's a, I think a very.
We have disapproved.
Okay, right now, I believe that capital planning is holding up a very important project downstairs, okay?
In what regard?
We've got a health issue, okay, a potential health issue.
Playstation, you're saying?
What?
You're meaning, meaning the Playstation, is that right, we say downstairs.
No, no, I'm talking about right now, we've, we've want to put, uh, do something about air quality down there, improve it. What?
That's before the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer.
We, that came, we meet monthly, that came to us after the last meeting, and we haven't met on it until next week, we have not seen that, that request. It went to the finance committee, at which time it was discussed, and said we haven't heard from the capital planning committee on this, well, let it go with capital planning first, and come to finance committee. So it hasn't been, hasn't been up or down, or hasn't even discussed yet.
All right.
And I think that the, the question, for example, is, is to, it is, it's this concept of what's the disagreement, and if you want participation in the selectmen, so be it. You can make, you can make the recommendation to have the town vote to replace the selectman, and you can take a finance committee member off and put a selectman in it plus. That was the original intention, but the way it says twelve-one, you kind of didn't get that, because it said, one finance committee, one selectman, town manager, and one person.
This, this is, this was just a draft, they haven't discussed it yet, so that's why.
We discussed that with Nick the night that he came.
And I gotta say something here, just for the sake of, and especially now that it's at fifty thousand. CPC is an advisory board, what are we so uptight about? If there's something we don't like, we take it under advisement, that doesn't mean we have to vote the way capital planning asks us to vote. I think this is a lot of ado about nothing.
You did that tonight with, by approving the grants to go, but even though we said no, you said yes, and it's on, it's on town vote, and, and they were all there, to be upped or down by you folks.
So how would you like to see change the, the makeup of it?
I really want, I don't think we've addressed Frank's original question.
I'd like to see this slightly about this, as in the capital planning, yes.
Yeah.
I think Tracy's involvement should be advisory and not voting member.
Yeah.
I think it puts too much pressure on her of being in between the FinCom, capital planning, and selectmen, as she is now a town employee, to be making that decision.
Right.
That's my call, I think it would be stronger to have the selectman involved and being voting member, and having an input and a part in discussion of all capital planning issues that capital planning. And I agree with that, that's the way it should be.
And I think, I think that strengthens the fact that a selectman is participating in the advisory capacity. I mean, I gotta be honest, I know sometimes capital planning seems like they're slowing us down, or they're, but I mean, what was stated earlier, capital planning in the right perspective can be helpful.
Well, it's, it's invaluable, it's not, it helps.
I, I think, I think the only argument I can make for strong capital planning committee is the fact that most of the recommendations that capital planning came up with are approved at town meetings for, for, and this is dumb trucks and other items that they, you know, and I think that there's a lot that we have approved that has to be counted. There's a lot of stuff we've slowed down, granted we have, and I agree with you, we've slowed some projects down, but the project, the slowing down, if you've been part of it, was primarily to get additional information, and most of the stuff has never been rejected out of hand, and which we needed more data, that's all.
And now one selectman's gonna be potty to slowing things down. So I mean, it makes it, you know, it makes it, makes it.
I, I think the fundamental issue and the selectman side of the story is that, um, we need better communication between the capital planning committee and the board of selectmen, and I mean, both directions, not just that one direction's wrong and not the other.
I agree, but I, I think.
And so, this is.
And Rob Thomas, with the capital planning book, it is exceptional, of all the items, the inventory, we started, we started inventoring all our town assets, looking at all the different things, all the requests coming into us, to be decided upon and also be researched. And a tremendous amount has been approved, this year, some eight hundred thousand dollars worth of capital has been approved, or it isn't that it's, it is slowing the process down, you're absolutely correct, but I believe it does prevent that, need your, here's a request, it's my favorite project, let's get it done, no questions asked. We indeed do ask questions, and I think the questions that fundamentally should be, your point well taken, communicated to the selectmen, saying, yeah, this is, you know, and there are the, there are the people who sit down with us, but the issue is that
Chapter ninety, yeah?
That we just want to have, uh, some more dialogue, that's all.
Do you think that, one, one problem I had with the original thing was that in order to go, there was language in there, in order to go to town meeting, it has to go before capital planning first. And I believe that no one small group should hold up the entire voters of the town to vote on something.
I think that the idea of going to town meeting by somebody who proposes, ten, ten individual people can put an article on the warrant that gives the town spend substantial amounts of money, I agree with you. And I think that the idea of preventing that from happening by saying it's must go to capital planning, really means we must go for proper review, that's all it is.
Yep.
And I think that that's, that's what the town should expect from us, is a proper financial review of a capital asset, and that's what it is, and does this on the project count, absolutely.
Was this voted on before I got here, I don't remember participating in the vote yet. I know it was on the original list, but I don't remember a vote.
I think you were here, I think you would just come in.
Maybe it was, I would.
Yeah.
No, actually, I came in with the beach.
Oh, okay, so you probably weren't here.
Okay, so I won't sign.
You know, I think in the past, as a town, has been political decision-making.
Right, okay, so you got those out of the way probably right at the beginning.
Show me one, show me one, you just, you just set me off, Frank, show me one poor decision that affected the economic thing of the selectman, tell me one.
Well, look at the harangue that the, the, the closing of the landfill and the transfer.
The selectman had nothing to do with that, that was more health.
Ancient history, it's eleven-thirty, we really need to get through this.
Frank's got a problem, then tell me what they are.
Well, did we properly evaluate the O and M costs for the land here?
That's.
Yeah, Frank, that's ancient history.
Well, yeah, but it's, it goes back to a point in time where we didn't have.
Let's not do this.
Some capital decisions.
We, we, capital planning in this defense is learning, as we don't know questions, and we've taken our time and, and presented all the things, and it's primarily, you know, it's, some of the individual departments have asked us for things that we have not approved, like, you know, the, the hot top roller, for example, but we've gotten back to them, and they've basically had an agreement that it should be postponed until it's something of higher priorities to take care of first. They wanted the excavator group there, rather than hot top. But I think, I think it's worked well, I think your involvement, the selectman's involvement is manager.
But one question, Larry. What Joe said about maybe the little catch twenty-two of having to have an annual review, maybe we could have a semi-annual review, we still could have put the hot top roller on.
Sure.
So I, I, I don't understand, I'm having a little.
It doesn't say that, it says they have to do a review.
We have to.
And then they can vote it up or down.
But, listen to me, what I'm trying to say is, you could change that annual review, it could be a semi-annual, so we didn't have, but, to wait for things. But the only thing is, just because capital planning says not to do something or put it off, we can still vote to put it on.
Yeah, we're also, we're, we've drifted pretty far afield from who should be on the committee, which is where we started, so let's get that out of the way.
Is it one member of the board of selectmen, one member of the FinCom, and three members at large, with the town administrator being ex officio, is that what, what do you have, Kathy?
Says, says two at large, I believe.
Yeah, it says two at large.
You want two at large, so you want four members?
I don't like a four-member committee.
I think we want to be, we want to stay at five.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's different about that, you just, a selectman is.
Back in.
In place of one of the finance committee members.
Yeah, but the trade-off would be, well, maybe it should be in place of an out-large as opposed to.
The town manager, the original concept of capital planning was, was a committee of the finance committee, separate committee, that's why it was under our authorship that we discussed the need for capital planning, part of our financial responsibility, that's why, that's where it came from. And so with the finance committee initiative, that's why the two members of the finance committee were put upon it, and the other two members of the town and the town manager. If the selectman wanted to take the town manager off, make it advisory, and work, and take it, and make it five, that's fine.
And, and I don't, because it's an advisory board, I don't have a problem with that, do you?
No.
I mean, then.
Well, again, as I said.
So tell me what it is, I.
The board of selectmen got on there because.
When is it gonna be, right now?
No, I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with.
You're going away from the thing, we want the composition of it.
What we want, Tracy's advisory, one finance committee member, one board of selectmen.
Right now, just me, we can make a motion and then decide, I don't have a problem with the selectman replacing Tracy, like we said that night when Nick was here.
Yeah.
But people can change that too.
So we'll have two finance committees?
No, whatever people decide, unless.
No, but wait, we, at some point, we gotta get to the point of making an amendment, right, just like we did for the twenty-five thousand, sir.
The original thought, at least I thought, was the board of selectmen were gonna replace Tracy because it didn't seem that she should be voting.
Right.
And that would have left two finance committee, a selectman, and two people from the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if people want to change that, that's fine too, I don't care.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was at as well, that's sort of just that one simple switch.
And the other thing, though, that I, I'd like to get out of this would be that we shouldn't have to wait till the end of something to be able to put it on a warrant.
I think that's already.
I'll tell you what, in fear, in fairness to that question, okay, last year, they convened a meeting a month before town meeting, and they were flexible on that, okay?
Yep.
You know, I mean.
Flexible on the, on this year with the vote coming up, it wasn't in our November number, and as we discussed, and, you know, so I, I don't think you can flexibility.
But, but again, we're getting off topic, it's like, right now, we're trying to decide if we want to amend twelve dash one, and now we're getting back to that.
Yeah, okay.
I forgot what's, that's powers and duties.
So make a motion with the composition like you just said.
Okay, so I, I move that we amend, uh, twelve dash one, uh, to, uh, I'm not quite sure how to word this, but town administrator would be ex officio, uh, we would have two members from FinCom, one member of the board of selectmen, and then, what is it, we would need two at large to flesh out the five.
Yeah.
Two at large.
Yeah.
Because Tracy doesn't count in that number.
And then, the rest, we leave out, you know, the planning committee.
Yeah.
Capital planning committee chooses chairman and stuff like that.
I would suggest, because we do have within the context of FinCom, every, every one of our meetings report from CPC.
Yeah.
Second.
Two members, we have the ability to set redemnders if one is not there, so we can carry it.
Second, so, any further discussion, or can we vote?
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
Okay.
It was one of the.
Okay, so we're, that was the amendment for twelve-one, okay, so now, you want to address the, was it the powers and duties or whatever it is that, which are.
No, not so, there was one other thing that came up for discussion, and that was, is there anything in here, because Chuck, you wanted excluded chapter ninety funds.
We, Nick, um, the capital planning committee voted to exclude that.
Being part of our review process.
Okay, so that's out, okay.
So that's resolved.
Motion to accept Article twenty-seven as amended.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Twenty-seven.
Okay, twenty-eight is asking town meeting to consider the Community Preservation Act. The way that it's structured is you ask town meeting, you get an affirmative vote, and then it would appear on the ballot as an initiative, it has to pass.
Okay, but the ballot, this doesn't have the percentage or the exclusion type stuff.
It does, you have to decide, it's in here.
Okay, that's right, I mean, we.
You have to decide, um, if you want to exempt the first hundred thousand of value, if you want three percent, two percent, one percent, if, if you want to include it at all.
Okay, so I, I see the, the percentage currently is at three, but that obviously can be amended, uh.
And whether or not you want to exempt the first hundred thousand of realist, of value.
I'm just trying to.
It's not in there.
It's, yeah, okay, so.
It's not in there.
So the amendment, if we wanted to go that route, we would have.
If you want, you'd need to add that in.
Okay, so to get the ball rolling, I will move that we approve the article.
Second?
I'm just trying to get the ball rolling.
I could not hear it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, to get the ball rolling, I'm going to move that we approve the article, and then we can discuss whether we want to approve it or not, and what modification.
Do you have a second yet?
No.
I'll second, though.
Okay, so now we can discuss and amend.
Is Martha, and you probably know better than anyone, does the three percent now still hold that the state gives you a hundred percent?
It, the percentage varies, I think this year was sort of around.
Fifty-six percent, fifty-six percent, something like that.
And what's the, that's the max, what's the low end?
And the max used to be a hundred percent.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the, the percentage, the three percent, three percent's the max under the.
It's the max, right.
And what's the min?
Um.
One or a half, or?
Point five, but.
A half percent, okay.
And, but I mean, if, if you're doing three now to get fifty-six percent.
Right.
What happens if you get two percent, or one and a half percent, do you get thirty-two and a half percent?
Your percentage goes down, yeah.
All right.
The percentage of match declines.
Right, so they don't cut it off, they still match you if you're.
Just not as, yeah. Because my, my feeling is, whatever we do, the return on investment's incredible compared to anything else we can do.
It used to be incredible at a hundred percent.
And still, yeah.
The other thing is.
Still, it's, you know, with interest rates what they are today, it's incredible.
It's a good, it's a good return, but the other side that we hear from is, we don't want to raise our taxes.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's what it is, it's raising the taxes.
It is.
So.
So that's, so if we're gonna go forward, then we need to address that issue, and that's where the choice of percentage, and in my mind, even more importantly, um, uh, this exclusion side, because we know on average, we're a very wealthy community, but we also know that, uh, we have a lot of folks who aren't average and are on the low side of things, and so to my mind, you know, I'm generally in favor of the concept, but I want to try to see, uh, can we do a decent balancing, balancing act if we go forward, so we can protect folks who are low income or fixed income?
The last three sentences address that issue.
Yeah.
They, they can opt out based on.
Who's that, what?
The last three sentences, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing, low or moderate-income senior housing in the town as defined in section two of the Act, can be exempted.
Yeah.
So people, remember in the presentation, they talked about that, that was a concern, but you can also add language in here so that everyone, every property owner can exempt the first hundred thousand of value of their property as well.
So we can do either or both.
You can do both, yeah.
Right. And again, I don't know, uh, what the current rules are and what defines qualifying for low-income housing and things, uh.
It's a formula.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm trying to understand, you know, because we have a number of examples in town where people are real estate rich and, you know, cash poor, and so, you know, you've got somebody living on social security, say, but, uh, they had a fairly good-sized house, but with the values of property.
It's an income qualification as determined, the assesses it usually through the calculation.
Okay, so that's nothing to do with sort of whether you have a big house or a little house or whatever, okay, so.
Now, if we were to accept this, and we decided to, let's say, accept Article twenty-eight at a lower percentage
Mm-hmm.
as opposed to three percent, let's say we did it for one and a half percent, and if we didn't like what it did, we could vote not to have CPA.
I think three years, five.
Five years.
So that's my question, if we vote, if we.
Has to pass.
But, you can, at any one year, you can go down to point five percent.
All right, so meaning that people should be very aware of this when they vote for that, and they might not know that, and it should be stated that once they vote for it, they got it for five years.
Right, we're, we're sort of locked into the program, but we can fine-tune the details.
The percentage.
That period.
Go down to point five percent.
Or, you know, whatever else, depending where we start from.
That's what we told the, that's the bottom you can go to.
And we can put that in the rationale, Jeff, too.
Yeah, should be there.
All the detail.
Well, certainly, I'm a hundred percent on board with the, the exclusion for the low-income housing and the low to moderate-income senior housing, and not knowing what those numbers are, but it certainly captures part of my concern.
Well, you can give your mouth that, um, that the low, moderate, moderate income would be for the time. Yeah, that's a, that's something we should know at.
Yeah, it would be nice to know what. Yeah, it would be nice to know what, what fraction of households or however we wanna look at it would qualify for that exemption.
There's no way to know that without getting their income tax information. I can't tell you that.
I'm just wondering if maybe, of course, I don't think the detailed data for Newbury are available yet from the Census Bureau. They have that sort of at the national level, but the fine-grained stuff, last time I checked, hadn't come out yet.
I don't think I've seen that.
Because that's the only thing we could go by is...
It was two thousand and twelve or something.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, saying, you know, that with the census stuff, that's the only kind of data we have that could be brought in there on this question, and the trouble is that after they do a census, there's all this analysis, and they do the sort of national stuff first.
But anyone that qualifies is eligible. I mean, I think that's the point.
That's what I'm saying, is that I like the idea, from a financial impact point of view, it would be nice if we knew how many households or however you want, measure you wanna use would qualify, but, so I'm really in support of that. And then, the next thing I'm thinking, well, especially under the conditions, we, today, we have folks that don't qualify for low-income housing and so forth, but are still having trouble making ends meet, especially as the economy recovery is so slow, and so does that...
Could you jack up the exemption amount, David?
Well, that's the sep, because that's separate, right? Are we gonna have like a separate, it applies to everybody, a hundred thousand dollar exemption? That's sort of what I was...
You, you can't exempt different people different amounts. You have to have a standard exemption.
No, but what I'm saying is that we can have both the exemption, the complete exemption for these folks that are on the low income side.
Oh, and the...
And we could also have the across-the-board hundred thousand exemptions, whatever.
Yes, definitely.
Really in favor of that exemption, because that also gets that next tier of people that are having trouble making ends meet but don't qualify for the, this very low-end type stuff.
Yep, yep.
In terms of what's fair, that makes a lot of sense, because on the average, you know, our average household could, and of course, nobody's average, could easily afford a one percent, because percentage-wise, the amount we tax ourselves compared to our average income is surprising low compared to any community in the state.
Very low.
You know, and so, in terms of the ability to pay, which is one thing that we're sort of look at when we're looking at communities and so forth.
No.
So we've got the ability to deal with this. The ability to pay is there if we can figure out how to not adversely hurt people who are below average, is I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Now, when he made the presentation, there was a lot more to it about how the money gets administered and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm, but this is just the first step, and then it has to go to the ballot, and then, after that, then we start adding the tax off, and the administration rests really in the office of the accountant, just making sure that each percentage is committed to the various aspects, the open space and preservation, recreation, housing, affordable housing, sports preservation.
We have to set a committee who sets the priorities, so within those constraints, we still have...
Right, you have to, you have to create a bylaw. This is just the first step.
Yeah.
Yeah, to see if it is interest.
As you say, even after we get approval in the ballot box, assuming that happens, then we still have these other steps to...
Yep.
Kinda get to the point where things are as fair and equal.
This is kind of gauging interest.
Yeah, so it's like, this starts us on the road, this Warren article, but there are a lot more steps along the way.
How do we know if we put this before the voters and we really become vested in this and it's fifty-six percent? The state doesn't have to hold to fifty-six percent. They can do anything they want. They could come up with thirty-six percent.
Well, the money...
They used to be a hundred percent, so it's a really good deal.
The money comes from a very specific source, and it's basically a little...
Surcharge on transfers at the registry.
Fees when, when you register property transfers.
And like Jeff's point, that money dropped way down last year, and so, when they passed the budget, they pumped it up, okay?
Yeah.
And that was a, they expect it to be annual, but there's no promise. You know, it's, it's like anything, comes from the state. You can't...
Well, also, though, I mean, given where the original, the recession really killed it, right? It's just, you know, people stopped buying and selling property. We had all these sort of fire sales and foreclosures and stuff, so...
It was a pretty big number that they added to it, wasn't it?
It was everywhere.
Yeah.
It was a pretty big number.
Yeah, because they were trying to make up for the fact that the original revenue source just took a real hit with the recession and...
They wanna maintain it at a certain...
Right, and then if, if, if the world goes back to where it was before the Great Recession, then hopefully, that revenue stream from that surcharge on the, I forgot what it is, the title's whatever.
Your point is, there's no guarantee on what it is, Jeff, not at all.
Right.
But at least we're hearing from the legislature that they're trying to maintain a bottom.
But you'll be guaranteed that you'll get two percent of your taxes or three percent of your taxes anyway. You'll be guaranteed of that for five years.
Well, so I guess what I would do to, again, start the amendment process is I would propose an amendment that we add a, across-the-board, a hundred thousand dollar exclusion.
Okay.
And then we can talk about percentages and things like that.
Is that, all right, the amendment's been made for the, to add the hundred thousand dollar exclusion.
Mm-hmm.
Second? Okay, so we're not gonna have any exclusions. I'll definitely go for exclusions.
You don't want an exemption?
No. The motion was made, it hasn't been seconded, so...
I'll second at least the amendment.
I'm trying, I'm trying to move a second along.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't know what the outcome's gonna be on the total vote, but at least, if we're gonna vote for it, let's make it as good as we can.
Is a hundred thousand enough?
It's the, I think it's our max, isn't it?
That's max.
Oh, that's the max you can do? Okay. All right.
You wanna do the low income as well?
Yeah, and so that wasn't already in there.
That's already in there.
So the, the hundred thousand exclusion is in addition. Now, I'd like to...
Aid?
Seconding.
To put a hundred thousand dollar exemption in it on this. Well, okay, all in favor of the hundred thousand dollar amendment?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Are you still breathing?
Yes, I am.
Now, the percentage.
The percentage.
Percentage, and I think three's probably too high, but I think half a percent might be too low, but I'm not sure where I am in that spectrum.
If you're gonna go down to half a percent, I almost recommend that you don't do it because it is a huge amount of work for assessors, accountants. It's a pretty significant burden.
So, yeah, because it's, there's all these hidden administrative costs that we normally don't see in the...
Right.
So...
But that's...
So, if we're going for the low end, at one percent, do you think it makes sense? I mean, you're saying half percent clearly doesn't make sense. One percent, is that sort of break even, or is there making a little money there? I don't know.
I, you know something?
It costs as much as one percent to administer this?
It takes a ton of time for each of the four quarterly billings. There has to be new accounts established. It's, it's a lot.
Do we, we're not, are we gonna have to hire more personnel or anything? Because if we do, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, the state takes, doesn't take a hundred percent administration fee.
You can u, yeah, you can use the mat, the funds that come in and the match. You can designate, I think, I wanna say we, up to ten percent can be designated for administrative costs, the money that comes in, but we never spent it. Once in a great while, if we had to have an appraisal, if you wanted to purchase a piece of open space or something, but...
Okay, so, we're now in sort of the one to three percent range, and I think three's a little high, so I'm sort of now in the one to two percent range.
Split the difference, one and a half? How's this on?
I made a motion that we amend it so that the percentage would be one and a half percent instead of three percent.
You know, the good thing about that is if we get some money and we can show some real successes, then we can try and increase it.
And again, I'm just, cost-benefit ratio, it sounds like the cost-benefit ratio is clearly becoming favorable in that one percent, one and a half percent range, so that's my motion to...
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Do we have a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, the motion's been made to amend it to one and a half percent, okay, as far as the amount that will be collected and seconded, and do we, all in favor or are you?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Yes, aye.
What are we in favor, the amendment?
The amendment of the, one and a half percent amendment.
Yes?
Aye, yes.
Okay, all right. So the article will read, as such, exempting the first hundred thousand dollars of value, and the amount that will be levied to the people be one and a half percent. Okay, so the motion on Article twenty-eight as amended.
Okay, just, because I don't think there's anywhere else we got much wiggle room, right, under the state law?
No.
Okay, so...
Vote?
No, motion on Article twenty-eight as amended, right? We gotta make that motion.
Oh, they didn't, okay.
Do we? I don't know, whatever works.
Yep.
David, yes?
Yes.
Yep.
Second?
Yep, second.
Okay, now, discussion? Jeff's got a question.
Discussion, which could engender another...
Is that it? We got all...
Amendment, but I wanna ask everyone really quickly, does everyone think if we're gonna go for one and a half percent as the percentage, that two percent, does it make a little more sense if you're thinking about just putting this before the voters, to have them have a chance to vote yes or no, because it gives it a percentage that seems like it would be workable? But that's just, just discussion, and I don't even expect anyone to answer. Upset.
All right.
So vote on the article.
Okay, vote on Article twenty-eight as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Obviously, somebody's gonna have to do a good job of explaining this to the folks at town meeting.
Well, you know what I would suggest? That the man that came up, I...
Stuart Saginaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest that he come and do another presentation to, like a public hearing type thing, and especially now that we have closed, we have the televisions going, have them operational the night that he comes, okay?
Okay.
He does a very nice job, and the night that he showed up, it was very, very high percentage of people that came in here against it. The vast majority were against it when they left, but there were some people that changed their mind, okay? No, seriously.
Running out of time.
Okay. Article twenty-nine.
We're gonna turn into the pumpkins soon.
We're talking...
No, I mean to have him come in before town meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Article twenty-nine is amending the charter. The issues are in section three. I think I have it underlined there for you. It is adding the appointment of the fish commissioners to the responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen. So that would be moving that from an elected position to an appointed position under section three.
That's the only change.
No, under section three, under section thirteen. At the time the original legislation was written, we did not have a principal assessor position or an assessor's clerk position. Both of those have been created as part of the reorganization. I would request that those be added in, again, under section thirteen.
Which page are we on, Tracy?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
Thirty-eight, under appointment by the town administrator. That's the second change. And the next change is on page forty, under section fifteen. It says at least ninety days before the annual town meeting. I would request that that be struck, and it just say, "The town administrator shall submit in writing to the Board of Selectmen detailed estimates." It usually does happen ninety days, but it isn't always, and they're updated right up until the week before town meeting. So this is just an actual, when we put it to practice, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. The ninety days would be stricken. And the last change proposed is on page forty-one, under section sixteen, honor before the seventy-fifth day is what it said previously, and I recommend changing that to honor before the thirtieth day, before the annual town meeting. We don't even get Triton's information until the first of March, so there's no way that I could provide it to you ninety, well, ninety days.
Maybe the other way we could look at it is if we appropriate a certain amount of money, maybe they'll go for that.
Okay, so in the, the overall timing...
It's just changing the timing, the timeline.
But of course, when do we have to approve the warrant?
The twenty-second.
This year, but I'm saying, I'm trying, I'm not, I can't do a...
Two weeks prior to, it has to be posted two weeks prior to the meeting.
Okay, so this basically says that...
Thirty days, we have to have it finalized.
It's essentially four weeks, so we're saying, okay, two weeks between the hard deadline, the, I guess the FinCom basically has to make their recommendations and stuff so that when we do our final approval, we'll know what the recommendations are and stuff as opposed to sort of where we are in some of this stuff, where it's just, we have approved this as a holding thing and that.
And I looked back over the last five years, and these are basically the timelines that we've worked with. I think it was written one way and approved, and now that it's been in practice.
Because, you know, in general, you know, in an ideal world, we'd do a much better job of getting our act together well before town meeting, but of course, we're interacting with multiple things beyond our control, like Triton's school committee and so on and so forth.
I mean, we approved the schedule in November. We're only off of work. Yes, that's it. That's it.
Okay, we got four minutes before we're into tomorrow.
It doesn't matter, right, from that point of view, other than getting some supper or sleep?
Yeah, there's no big deal.
Extending meeting, I don't think it...
Yeah, I don't think...
Doesn't matter, okay.
Okay.
Keep talking.
Anything else?
Need a motion to...
Oh, that's it. Those are the only changes.
Motion to approve Article twenty-nine?
Well, I, I wanna, a little discussion. I'm happy with everything except, wait, I'm personally happy with everything, but as we know, fish commissioners can be a hot-button topic in this town.
They voted to do this.
Otherwise, otherwise we can't do anything.
And I know, you know, so I'm just saying that, I'm talking not about the, the individuals on that board, but rather, you know, when we tried to do something like this in the past, you know, with a couple of different positions, there was kind of an outcry, and my feeling was that it was largely because at the time, there were a significant number of people in town who weren't happy with some of the actions that the Board of Selectmen were taking, and as a result, they didn't wanna give any more power as they saw to the Board of Selectmen. That was my sort of take of what was behind that vote. I think many of those issues are now history, thank God, and so on, so I think that this now has a reasonable chance of passing. You know, many years ago, they didn't, I just know those chances, you know where. So I think, and I'm personally very much in favor of it, so I just wanted to raise that issue, but I'm certainly gonna vote in favor.
But before, fish commissioners didn't wanna do it.
They were opposed.
And now they're the ones that have proposed it, so...
And of course, most people won't know all the history we've gone through with commissioners and constables and all that kind of stuff, and this is part of cleaning up that problem.
Yeah.
So I'm happy, so I'm...
The motion, they need a second.
Motion's been...
We need a second.
Seconded. All in favor of this article?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Article thirty. The changes aren't before you yet. The personnel board was talking about allowing for a vacation carry forward. Now you have a use it or lose it, and what happens is, by the last week in June, everyone rushes out of the building to use all their vacation time, so I'd like to allow them to have a period of up to three months to carry that forward, so that if the language comes in time next week, otherwise, it'll be postponed.
I think that's a good thing because it's all, it's with the approval, any vacations have to be approved by the Department, so...
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. Article thirty-one is the language that the...
Okay, we have to vote, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're postponing, sorry, we're postponing the vote because we don't have a...
Until the next one, yep.
So it's just a postponement, okay.
Article thirty-one is the language that the Selectmen had voted to include for the, allowing the firefighters to work from age sixty-five to seventy. You have since suggested that the individuals be named, so that it would sunset upon their turning age seventy, but I need their names.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move Article Thirty-One, and to add the names of firefighter Robert Haynes, firefighter Edward Sterns, and firefighter Wayne Reetz.
Second.
So those are, the list is best we know it, right?
And it'll end when they're seventy.
And that will do it, that will sunset it after.
After that, everybody will be sixty-five.
Could you please spell Reetz for me?
R-E-E-T-Z.
R-E-E-T-Z, thank you.
So, I guess, I'm just wondering about the sunset aspect, does that mean that this problem will mysteriously go away, because we'll have other people turning sixty-five?
The intention is to follow the law after these people reach age seventy.
And we think that that won't impose the hardships that we've heard about.
Well, it gives everyone enough notice that this is coming. All right?
Aye.
That one there is all set?
Do we vote?
No, no, that's what I'm saying, are we ready for a vote on it, yeah?
Motion?
Motion, second?
Oh, we have a motion, sorry.
I second it.
You second it?
We're all getting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For Thirty-One, okay.
Okay.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two is the acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight P, which allows a treasurer or a collector in a municipality upon successful completion of necessary coursework and passing an examination to get a one-time stipend, if you will, for a thousand dollars compensation.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? No, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
And Article Thirty-Three, you have, oh, okay, Article Thirty-Three is asking town meeting to authorize the Selectmen to negotiate a pilot, this one in particular would be with Borrego Energy relative to the Basha?
Basha.
Thank you, and Yasiar Properties.
Does it say that on here, though?
No, but I haven't finished the rationale.
Okay, all right, okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
The only thing I'm wondering is, what we learned from the Pickle property is that, I'm not sure pilot's the right term for this, I thought we were told that there was.
Well, it says a tax agreement, and in quotes, it's what's referred to as a pilot.
But we were told it's really not a, because it was a trade-off, right, it was a, to negotiate sort of how we get paid, right, as opposed to the, or is this something that would be above and beyond that, because when we're dealing with the Pickle property, you know, the discussion was, do we just have our normal taxes, or do we?
This is the language that the attorney provided, I don't know, I can.
Well, they're, they're a very big company, so hopefully, and they, you know, spent some significant time now in Massachusetts, so hopefully they know what they're doing.